Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for being here. If you could rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda.
Move approval of the agenda.
Second. Having a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to announcements. I just want to remind everyone, this is the board's meeting in public. This is not a public board meeting. We are governed by Idaho Code. Sorry, here. We're governed by Idaho Code, IDAPA, and our policies. When we do public input, that is for the public to provide us with input. It is not for back and forth discussion. We also have a letter from the Idaho Building Capacity Project that states. Open it. Oh, okay. That our schools are no longer in a needs improvement status based on re-identification formulas. So we have come out of that. Ms. Arnold, would you like to state what that is about? I mean, just a little synopsis.
Yes, so all of our buildings that were identified as targeted schools of improvement were there based on a gap of 35% between what our typically performing students are doing on the ISAT and what our specialized population was doing. There was a 35% gap in achievement. So we have worked diligently at all of the schools. I think there were five. And working with our special ed department, special ed director, and just our teachers in general to close that gap. The state did change the formula, so we're not quite. And I'm not quite sure what changes they made to the formula determining their TSI schools, but we were happy here that we were no longer identified. And we'll just continue plugging away to make sure that our special ed students are growing at the same rate that our non-special ed students are. And this was a really nice letter from Bonnie, who was our capacity builder, just appreciating the administration and the teachers. The collaborative process.
I'm touching these again.
Okay, we're about two fingers up in the air.
Okay, perfect. You have to use two?
Yeah.
Okay. Time for public input. We do have one person that would like to speak. Speak, I can talk then, help. Anita.
Dupsec.
Dupsec. Regarding supplemental curriculum, library books, and draft policies, 2345 and 2340, and a human rights club. Okay, perfect.
And you're a Dupsec community member. Good evening, Chairwoman Thompson, Superintendent Arnold, and trustees. I believe the main purpose of a school board is to provide an excellent education for its students. We often hear it takes a village to raise a child. I believe it's parents who are responsible for raising their children. Schools and community are supplemental supports for parents. Part of an excellent education is teaching children how to use logic and discernment as they move through their education and beyond. And this is done through excellent teachers and good curriculum, both standard-based and supplemental. With that in mind, I have the following comments on tonight's agenda items. First of all, thank you for allowing parenting community member input on curriculum and supplemental curriculum. You have a big challenge before you to select what is most beneficial for your students. I have a concern about supplemental and library collections. I am part of the supplemental curriculum committee and as such, not only look at the link that is sent with the list, but I also go to Amazon and the community library to take a look at the books that are available there. Most of us on the community don't have time to read all the books, but what Amazon allows is a look inside option that generally gives the first two or three chapters of a book you can read. I've read several of the books whose authors are part of the Lakeland High School collection, and they are so dark, discouraging, heavy, and suggestive, not only sexually, but with thoughts of suicide, harm to self and others, drug use, and much more. In the culture we now live in, we know our children have worries and ideas thrust upon them that we didn't have when we were growing up. With suicide and drug use so prevalent among our young people today, it worries me that these books or authors are allowed. We know that kids in high school are just that, still kids, and they often don't have the ability to reason or separate reality from fiction, especially if they're struggling socially, emotionally, or physically. And providing these books could possibly encourage a behavior that could be destructive if just one student is safe from being influenced. Isn't it worth leaving that book or author out of a collection for high school years? Next, looking at draft policy 2345 speakers in classrooms and 2340 controversial issues and sex ed, the form for parents' consideration concerns me. If an issue is controversial, why do parents have to opt out of it? If anything, an opt-in form to allow student attendance may assure that parents take a look at what the controversial subject actually is. Lastly, I see a human rights club has been approved for Lakeland High School. The stated purpose, benefit to students, and bylaw statements are so broad that pretty much any behavior or thought seems to be accepted. I don't know if it's affiliated with the International Human Rights Club organization, but that's club mission statement is human rights of those of color, race, ethnicity, gender, religion, and sexual orientation. If the two are affiliated, how can parents be assured that woke ideologies won't be introduced into this club? Thank you.
Thank you. Anita, would you mind emailing us what you've written?
No, no, I will do that.
Okay.
Or if you just want me to drop it off, email me the address.
You can drop it off if you come home with that. Thank you. Moving on to reports. I'll just stick here. I still can't get on the internet, so I don't know what the deal is. It's not happening. First report up is a financial report. Did everyone have a chance to review the financials? Do you want to sit with me?
I'm happy to sit next to you if you'd like.
Sure.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Our new treasurer is here.
Yes.
And moving forward. She's still, Brian's still kind of coaching her in her position, but moving forward, she will present the report for you.
Perfect.
And so one of the things that I will ask of you later is just if we could set a meeting, the three of us, to just kind of chat about how you would like the information presented. So that's on our bucket.
All right, perfect. It does show that we are actually in black instead of the red, which I think is great. We were anticipating being in the red, but we're not, which is great. Does anyone have any questions regarding the financials, the budget status report? Nope, okay. That would be great. Okay, student achievement data. Now, this is on which program?
This is.
Where is this?
This is letter sound. Correct words per minute, so remember, and correct words per minute. So when we did the, our SIP, and we chose the district, chosen metrics, we agreed that we were going to add the correct words per minute so that we were being intentional about taking all those discrete skills that kids were learning and transitioning to a fluency reader.
Right.
So the letter sounds is kindergarten, that's their fluency measure, and then first, second, third, fourth, and fifth will be, or first, second, third.
Yep.
Will be words, correct words per minute.
What is this proficient basic, below basic? What are the numbers in there? Is that the number of students?
No, that's the number of letter sounds that they needed to hit in order to be proficient.
Okay.
So.
And what over here? Oh, they needed to be proficient in 10?
Yes, proficient. So this is words per minute. So this is letter sounds, kindergarten, and it's not timed.
Okay.
This is correct words per minute. So in first grade, first quarter, they only need to read 10 words per minute because they're just learning how to do that. And actually, on our old IRI, they didn't even measure words correct per minute in the first quarter for first grade.
Okay.
But, and then you can see it goes up by.
Right. So utilizing that over here.
Yes, so.
This is, what is in there is the proficient?
So you can see first quarter for first grade by building, those are by buildings. You can see what the proficiency levels were in the now second quarter. So we went from 10 words per minute to 25 words per minute. But you, and you can see what's happening with some of our proficiency scores.
Oh, yeah.
Because what we're finding is that we're not being intentional about teaching too fluency and actually giving kids practice opportunities in text to get to be fluent. So Dr. Pasley actually had a meeting with the elementary principals, and they talked about different ways that we can start to see those numbers come back up to where they should be.
Or is that, can you scroll to the first slide?
There you go. Dr. Pasley, want to add anything to that?
So I just want to point out that this one right here, this is actually letter sound. So it is, we still do it on the report card the same way we used to do it. So the goal is 10 correct words per minute, that's kind of our measure, but we don't score it. So that's why you see a significant dip from here to here, because this is letter sounds and this is correct words per minute. So we're really trying to push time in text and authentic time in text so that kids are actually reading. We're teaching brosity, we're teaching how to read with intonation and all of that. So you see some of these dips because we're, when we used to do our old IRI, there was a lot of reading and, you know, you would read as fast as you can, skip the words you don't know, don't sound them out, just read to get all the, you know, the two to the A's to get more words. And we're really pushing that you're reading authentically. Like, how would you actually read, you're pausing at commas, you're pausing at periods, those kinds of things. Are a little bit lower, they're higher than they were last year since we started this, and really teaching with intentionality, but every year they're getting better. But if you compare them to our old IRI, they look, they look lower, but it's because we're not trying to, we want kids to sound out the words. We are really sticking to the three-second timing, which means if there's a word you don't know, you try it for three seconds and then a given word will be given to if you don't know it. So our goal is that kids are just having time in text.
Okay. Okay, on the math, overall growth.
It's low. So what I'm going to remind you is last year when we did this, so there's three different ways that we can report on IREDDI data. You can report it on beginning of the year status, so what was there? Kind of they're looking at that regression. You can look at it in a standard view, or you can look at it in an end-of-the-year view. End-of-the-year is end-of-the-year proficiency. So it's rating the expectation of where kids would be in January if they had, every single content had been taught, every single standard had been taught, this is where they are in that progression. So it's always going to be low, IREDDI expects it to be low. I could have put a chart together for you for standard view. The difference is, is you can't do a rate of improvement because it's not the same standards taught. So when you pull up our standard view, it's significantly higher. So what it means is if we focused in first and second quarter in geometry, we're in the 60s and 70s proficient range in some grade levels. But when you look at the overall, there's, we're not expecting mastery until May, and so you're going to see low numbers there. I met with one of the IREDDI coordinators today and talked to their kind of lead region person, and she's like, "Your data looks great." I'm like, "Well, can you call the disk of board and tell them that?" So, and reminder, this is truly our first year in implementation, K8. Last year, we had people kind of playing around with it. And so for them to generalize those skills, they say expect three years. So I've been meeting with every grade level team at the elementary level, just checking in and how they're feeling with implementation. The buildings that did it with fidelity last year are feeling like they're getting the pace dialed in. The kids are much more proficient at it. They're having, you know, greater results with our mastery assessment. So it's just taking some time. There's a significant increase in rigor, and you can kind of see that in some of the scores. It's a big jump from depth of knowledge one to depth of knowledge three and four, which is every single test that they're given in IREDDI is a three and a four.
Well, and respectfully, I mean, they are growing.
Right.
It's just not.
Right.
But there's growth. So that means we're doing something right.
And if any point you guys want to see a standard view, I can put something together for you, but it's not, you can't compare it from quarter to quarter or, you know, fall, winter, spring because it's addressing different standards. So it's not apples to apples.
Does anybody have any questions or inputs or thoughts on the data?
Well, I think we just need to remember that this doesn't give us any specificity of anything, and it's always looking behind. So, yeah, there's growth, and it looks, I mean, I think it looks fine because we're not drilling down to a certain concept or what was happening. And, you know, we know how tests go, you know, maybe the kids felt great, maybe they didn't feel great, maybe it was a late day, I mean.
They're still being tested on things they haven't been taught yet.
Right, right. And this is the first year of implementation, whereas before, we really, without a lot of extra work, there really was no way, a lot of extra work from everybody involved, there really was no way for a great, a good measurement. So, I mean, I'm fine with it, it's a very high-level view. Here's where we are, here's, I mean, there's growth, we're not going backwards. You know, I think that's fine.
In our ISIP across grade levels, we are seeing, I compared apples to apples from January last year to this year, we are seeing increased growth. So I think all of our data meetings and really being intentional about how we support kids that are struggling is working, so. But, you know, that doesn't happen overnight, it definitely takes some time. So, but we're seeing increased growth across from year to year, which is what we're hoping for, so.
Right, and it's not coordinated, so it's like, you can't look and say, "Oh, last year we were here, this year we're not."
We will be able to do that at the end of the year, so we'll do quarter and all of that. But for this time, it's hard to do that just because it's not, you don't test the same kids, so.
Right, right. I did have a question about the words per minute and all of the fluency. How is that data collected? And I think I've asked this before, and somebody told me that I don't remember how the data is collected, and who creates the spreadsheet? What I'm getting at is I'm wondering how much time are teachers spending translating data or numbers from spreadsheet to spreadsheet from this program, that program, and trying to, you know, consolidate it into something to hand it off to someone else?
So all of these spreadsheets you see I make.
And how do you get the data?
I just pull it off of ISIP and IREDDI. Correct words per minute is different because it's a report card measure. So everything that dropped down that second window that you saw that was in blue, that's specific to report card measures. So they already do that, which is why we pulled that as a SIPs material, because it was something teachers already create. So they're not putting it in a spreadsheet. What happens is, is they'll put it into the gradebook principles, pull it, and then send it to me. So, but everything else I make, we're really trying to be cognizant of not having teachers have to create this. So I pull all of this off of the actual platforms. So teachers don't have to have a part of it.
Okay, all right. That's great. I mean, I just, I know that, you know, we're trying to get there little by little. I just, I'm very aware of the district surrounding us, how many hours teachers and aides and whomever spend collecting data from all these disconnected pieces of software to put in a spreadsheet to hand off, you know, it's like, all these steps.
And we have really worked at streamlining that so that it's, you know, it, we are, kids, teachers are getting to instruct, and if we have to pull data, then it's the administrators pulling it. And I really try to eliminate as much as the principals have to be a part of it, so I just take it directly from the platform.
So one of the things that came up, we met with the Lakeland Cabinet last Thursday for our quarterly meeting, and one of our elementary teachers from her building asked us to consider, and I personally thought this was a great idea, but this is definitely a board decision, the idea of moving our elementaries to trimesters as opposed to quarters. And the reason for that is it would eliminate one whole quarter's worth of assessing and give us back some instructional time. And it would help us align our, our trimesters would align with our benchmarking so that the benchmarks make a little bit more sense. Instead of being in the middle of a quarter, it would be, we could do, we could run our trimesters and then set our benchmarking windows to kind of coincide with the end of the trimester.
Could it minimize these standardized reports for report card purposes? Because some of it is just, we have to pull data for a report card.
Right.
And the teachers do spend a lot of time at the end of every quarter assessing, and so we're losing valuable instructional time to do that.
I'm for anything that minimizes all of this I love data. But I mean, sometimes you can over-collect and over-analyze to where you're really doing more damage than good. And I'm for anything that minimizes to what works for us. You know, obviously, we have statute or whatever that we have to meet or whatever in the Department of Education, whomever's making the rules. But I'm all for creating, taking back that time for instruction, for the teacher, for the student, for, because I really believe that's a lot of, well, outside of the tests, not aligning with the curriculum, that would help.
Right.
I do believe, yeah, I do believe that that's a lot of the issue of not, you know, kids not being able to really get the help they need, or the teachers being able to teach at the level they would like to instruct, or.
Well, and reminder, at K5, we're the only ones that have to do the IRI. We also have to do the ISAT. We also are collecting report card measures four different times, and we're pulling correct words per minute data. So, I mean, there's a lot of standardized assessments that happen at K5 that don't happen. Then you have IREDDI that don't happen at the other grade bands. And so we just thought it was a brilliant idea. And so we asked those leaders to go back to their buildings and just get some feedback and talk to principals, and then we wanted to plant the seed with you. But it would minimize so that there's just, we're building in more instructional time instead of data assessment.
And we'll have to bring next year's calendar back to the board based on our discussion later on the agenda. And then we have some feedback about only one curriculum being October instead of two to save some instructional time there as well. So we're going to have to bring it back to the board for an amended approval, I guess. So we will do our due diligence with regard to the trimester. It won't impact the parents, but it will impact the teachers and the principals, so just making sure everybody's on board and bring that back.
But we felt like now was the time with NELA and a science adoption because the pacing guides are going to change anyway, so it would be nice to just transition them all at the same time.
Right, yeah, that would be wonderful.
Selfishly. Be an eye.
I think everybody would agree with me on that one. We did a lot of, oh, yeah, let's just do it all at once.
Streamline it, yes.
Yes. Okay, perfect. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
For the information. Any other questions? The report on the Rathdrum High School, did everyone have a chance to watch the video?
Yes.
So, yeah, so I'll remind you, at the beginning of the year, we had, was it Betty Magnus?
Yes.
Who provided public comment, and she asked about those pictures and how to make them available. And for those of us who are very Florida fans, they have permanent sticking charms on them, they don't come off the walls. So Jackie, now our communication specialist, had to get creative with lighting and what, just the equipment that she used. But that's what she came up with, and as long as the board is in agreement, we'd like to just have it posted so that anybody can go to our website and find it and have access to it.
Okay.
But we just wanted you to have a good follow-up on the request.
Okay, perfect. So the intention then for the video is to post it on our website?
We can push it out on our Facebook page and just.
Well done.
Yeah, what is, the museum we have? Would there be?
We could share the link.
Because I just think it would be beneficial if, I mean, because her, what I took from her public input was people need to have access to this, and I don't want to feel like we're just holding on to it. So let's give it back to the community.
So Jackie, can we reach out to the?
Perfect. I mean, and put it on our website.
Right, I hear what you're saying. Just get it out there.
Yes. Okay, moving over to the superintendent follow-up.
So I have an additional comment. In my.
Oh, for you?
Yes, please. Sorry. So when I was reaching out to the state with regard to dual credit, the last thing I had heard from them was that the intention is that NIC is going to maintain their accreditation. That has changed, and I do believe that they are in danger of losing their accreditation. We'll know more on March 14-ish. But I do think at this point, it's probably in our best interest and the interest of our kids to be ready to move to a different platform. Boise State University will not work with anybody outside of Treasure Valley.
Right.
But the University of Idaho will, the College of Southern Idaho will, LCSC will. And so Dr. Pasley and I are going to meet with our NIC dual credit instructors to find out which of these entities they have preference and try to move them all to this, to one.
Okay.
So that we're working this with once and having a whole bunch of that kid to transfer from.
Right.
Unless the board feels differently. NIC has been told that they must have a two-year teach-out plan ready to go, which indicates a loss of accreditation.
Okay.
Which makes me sad, but that's where we are. And if at some point they figure things out and get their act together and regain the accreditation, we can relook at that. But I don't want to be in a position where we get started next year and then.
No, I understand. I thought, though, what you had said was that if they should lose their accreditation.
It's a two-year.
Yeah, with the kids. So it would not impact our juniors of this year if they should lose it.
If they're in a two, if they find out this year that they're going into a two-year teach-out, they can't take anybody new.
Right.
So, and that, and because the, our dual credit kids are not degree-seeking, unless we have juniors who actually are seeking that AA, they wouldn't be considered part of that two-year teach-out. So we would want to make sure that they have a route.
Okay.
It's really for the degree-seeking kids?
Okay. So kids that are just taking classes, they're the ones that are going to have to transition to another university. But if a junior is on track to get their AA, they're in their program and have two years to finish it. Okay. Okay. Well, and that's what it is.
Technically, I suppose we could argue that all of our kids, all of our this year's juniors could be in that boat. I just know we have a lot of parents who are concerned about the transferability of those credits. So I think it would be in our best interest to make that move.
You know, a long time ago, we used to work also with BYU. I mean, we haven't had enough options here, but have we talked to them or do we still do that or no?
I don't ever remember having dual credit super.
Yeah, um Timberlake used to do it a long time ago.
I've done it before, right?
Yeah. On the demographics spreadsheet, can you leave it open?
Yes, ma'am.
Where are we? Oh, you're not on there. You're over there.
Oh. That's why I was moving.
I just thought I was going to say no.
Um, okay, so at the last board meeting, um trustee Grissom had asked me about putting together some demographics. Um, I wasn't sure if there were specific demographics you were looking for, but I, so I pulled what immediately came to mind. If there are additional demographics that you would like, um, I can, I can add the columns and we can add the data.
Okay, great, perfect. Yeah, this is a, a good start. Um, I don't remember what the topic was at the time and I was.
It was the self-assessment.
Yeah, um.
And it just had a blanket statement as far as demographics.
Right, yeah, um, prior to that. But anyways, this one, yeah, I did look at this and this is a, um, a good. Uh, you know, what else would be nice too, we could probably just accumulate it. I think it might be on that, um, on one of the building review spreadsheets somewhere. If we had, um, maybe I could add it to this information about the building itself, how many classrooms there are, um. But I think that's on one of the, one of those other spreadsheets I've seen with the, uh.
I think uh Mr. Ferriola or Mr. Wallace has that.
But this is a good start right here.
I'm sorry, but I could, um, maybe, I could gain access to that and create a link so that they're both in one place if that would make it easier.
Yeah, yeah. But yeah, thank you. Just curious. I mean, we have a lot of bodies and I feel like we've gone into the sauna, so, you know. Jackie, thank you. Can you just tell me what the F R percentage?
Free and reduced lunch percentage.
Oh, okay.
So that's our low socioeconomic.
Okay. I'm trying to figure, I'm like, addition?
Yeah.
What's the, what's the last column?
Um, bikini bento.
Homeless.
That's the homeless.
Okay. That's tragic. Okay. So you can just run it free?
Okay, I will. I'm happy to do that for you.
Consent agenda, does anyone have any questions? I had some, um. There you go. So I wanted to um congratulate trustee Quinby on his advocacy for those bleachers and actually accomplishing that. I think that's awesome. That was a big win for uh the middle school, Lakeland Middle School and the district budget. So that's awesome. Plus, we included uh the K Tech students too to, to move it. And I mean, I think it's just, it's great, yeah. So we were able to basically move, recycle the bleachers from over at the high school to the middle school where they needed them and use the K Tech kids for their class, you know, what they're already taking classes on and, yeah, that's great. Because how many are the bleachers?
We spent almost.
Hundred thousand, all work.
Hundred thousand, yeah.
And we just spent almost four hundred thousand, I think, between the two high schools on the bleachers.
Yeah, big jam.
So, yes, I did.
So thank you for your persistence.
I did say out loud that day that Mr. Quinby was right.
Yeah.
We got that affirmation.
Once in my life.
I also uh wanted to comment on the, on the update on um. Congratulations on your presentation for the levy and getting that uh backing that's never been accomplished before. Um, that's awesome. I also wanted to thank you for not, um, I like the way you said, ask the teachers, not going to ask the teachers to hold signs. Um, most of the staff before felt that they were voluntold. They really weren't. Yeah, um, so I was so elated to see that you will not be putting that burden on them to participate in something that might be burdensome to them for many reasons um regarding the um campaigning for the levy. Um, so I thought that this was a, a great update and a lot of really good accomplishments, so. Yes. And thank you.
And then I just, uh, I know it's in the update, but just to say publicly, I um appreciated the fact that trustee Quinby went with me to the committee meeting uh and then spoke on my behalf without me knowing he was going to do so. Uh, and so that meant a lot and I know it meant a lot to the committee.
Good. And for working hard enough to bring those schools um as of November last year out of that status with uh the state, that's awesome too, so.
There's a lot to celebrate.
Yeah, it was great. It's really good, yes. That was all we had for the board. Okay. Anyone else? Comments? Moving on to the consent agenda, we have the minutes of the previous meeting. Any comments, questions or concerns on that? Okay, we have the minutes of the subcommittee meetings to be accepted. Any comments or questions? H R items, we have um the board book memo and then the resignations. Questions or comments? The regular and special bills?
Um trustee, our board chair Thompson.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if, if it's okay, I would like for our treasurer um to speak. She just has um just a quick update for you. Um, in case you noticed, there's a little bit of a discrepancy in mountain, or in food services sewer bill and uh Chelsea has an update for you on that.
Okay.
So um I noticed as we were going through and kind of updating the food service that their sewer bill has gone up quite a bit over the last few months. And um Annette, our payable or accounts payable person has called and um the city couldn't find anything on their end, maintenance couldn't find anything on their end. They came together today and were kind of walking through, but it's gone up quite a bit over the last three months.
Okay.
And, but we are working on it, so it's not just sitting out there. Just wanted to let you guys know that that's kind of, we noticed it and we're trying to figure out what's going on.
Okay, I bet that would be under city Rathdrum.
Yeah.
Because there was like this huge credit that we, I thought.
We did have a credit and that was before I came on and I'm not quite sure. I, I know they had talked about that, but yeah, this one is, I think we were in the two, the three hundred dollar range and then we're up to the thirteen and sixteen.
Yeah, it went from two eighty-nine fifty to thirteen and sixty-two and then sixteen eighty-one. So significant price increase, so.
And they don't know what yet?
No, we looked, they, they couldn't find anything on their end. We've looked on our end, so they were today talking about that, trying to figure out where the issue is so we can get it fixed.
Okay.
Yes.
That, that would be great, we need to get that fixed.
Exactly.
We'll have more credits, do we?
Yes, exactly. I would live in more, yeah. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So we spent seventy, around seventy thousand dollars in December for snow removal? Okay, that's a lot of snow dollars.
A lot of snow dollars.
Right. And we were closed a week.
Yeah, that, it was really the eighteen inches of snow we got in the one, that one day. So it was November and December together, but um, and then it just kept snowing.
And snowing, and snowing.
I'd be happy if we could just never have snow again.
Well, let's just put heat blankets down, make it all go away. Um, I had a couple of questions. I had to figure out what it was. I know it's right here. Oh, what is paper cut support renewal? Do we know? It's from Fisher's Technology.
Yeah, that's the software that we run so that Chromebooks can print for all the student devices and um also to our copiers. It integrates with our directory services with kids' accounts, with staff accounts and.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's just, they sort of need that software for Chromebooks to print uh devices.
Okay. Is that something we pay annually or not?
Uh, yes.
Okay. What did we run a legal advertisement for?
We've done it for the, um, we advertise, I think, surplus sale.
Okay.
And then we also advertise for the construction services.
Uh, what about our, do we have to publish the levy?
Um, no, the levy doesn't have to go to public notice.
Does anybody have any other questions or whatnot on the bills list? What's the vocational rehab for the work transition project? What, what was that?
Um, Chelsea would be better able to answer that voc, voc rehab, but we have a contract with Vocational Rehab for, to help with the transition for our high school students into the workforce in special education.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
It's eighteen through twenty-one.
Okay, yeah. Um, and then uh Food Services Milk Grant, I noticed that was on there twice. I don't even remember seeing that before. Was that on there before, the Milk Services Grant?
Yeah, there's um, it was sort of an outside grant with some of the extra dollars that, you know, sort of some, one of the minor COVID dollar grants. And so usually Chartwell's buys everything and then we reimburse Chartwell's on their invoice. But this is easier to run just sort of directly through the district, so that's what it is.
Oh.
So, yeah, so it's just, we're getting a better deal on buying milk through the grant, yeah.
Yep, I figured it was tied in there somewhere. This wasn't.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think the grant's gonna go past this year, but Kevin's using it until we can't.
Okay, okay. Uh, the professional E-rate consulting services on funds for learning for ten thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's the consultant company we've used for many years to help manage the federal E-rate program and uh doing all the R F Ps and the claims and managing. It's a pretty complex program and they, we used them for years.
Okay, prior to us using, we didn't, we weren't getting the maximum return on our E-rate.
Okay, okay.
It's worth the money.
What was the repair and replacement of piping at the cover wood elementary? It was fourteen thousand.
Do you know what the pipe repair at Garwood?
That was the lift station.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Was that total replacement?
It was not a total replacement. No pumps were rebuilt. The plumbing, the piping in the ground was subpar from the get-go, so they redid it. So now we have ease of pulling pumps and we have to service them.
Any other questions on the bills?
Our payment to K Tech, is that, this is a half, we make that twice a year.
Yeah, that's the second half. Um, sometimes we'll get a true-up bill depending if their costs are higher and all three districts have to share, but that's always discussed at the K Tech before, more and before they move forward as a thing like that.
Um, the, and we replaced the heat pump at, at Timberlake High School. It looks like for thirty-three thousand and some change.
Yeah, that was one of those, uh, that was one of the um Capitol COVID projects um that were approved a while ago. It just took that long to get the parts.
Oh, wow, okay. Yeah, I thought we had discussed that, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that's been hanging out there actually quite a while.
Yeah.
Everything's delayed. Yeah, so that was, some of the federal dollars um went to that.
What is the tobacco cessation program for payment for uh Lakeland High?
It's for Idaho Panhandle, that pro, program, I believe.
Isn't that when a child?
Yeah, so we run it, we have a class and when kids get caught vaping in lieu of the citation, they can take the class.
Oh, okay. I thought it was when they were drug tested and tested for nicotine. Okay, same thing, okay. I think that's probably, and I had some others that. I guess it's, I'm fine with that. Oh, Idaho, the school board, Idaho School Board Association, um, I have a question about that. I still don't know that we ever really got true clarity about whether, you know, what we pay them on an annual basis or a monthly basis and what are we actually paying for? I know they had different levels of membership. Um, and we had discussed this a, a few times. And it just sort of went by the wayside because we never really got back to it or couldn't get it nailed down. But if we could actually get something in writing that's not some, you know, high visual, but what are we literally paying them for and how much? So I know we have the one here for the Day on the Hill and the policy update. But I, we never figured out what membership we were, if it was silver or gold or they just sent us this pamphlet, but it didn't ever, they never really nailed down. I don't think as a board we decided what we wanted to do. It just got submitted, so knowing what we're paying for would be great.
Okay, we'll work with Cook and we'll find out how much we pay every year and what we actually get for that.
Okay, perfect, awesome. I have, uh, oh, the emergency spill at Apple, what was that?
Mike, do you remember that?
Emergency spill?
And that's what it says, Able Cleanup Technologies?
Oh, we had a, I got a call that a student broke a thermometer and we didn't know if it had mercury in it. And so I called, um, I called Able to go up there and investigate because if it had mercury, it would have been a hazmat site. And it wasn't luckily, but that's what that was, to have him go out there and respond and determine what, what we were dealing with.
It's a little thing, isn't it?
Yeah, yes. I, I have another question, so you keep it. You good?
I'm good.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda.
Let me turn further the consent agenda.
So good.
I'll give a motion in second oral papers. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Bearing none, the motion carries. Uh, moving on. No, I know. I was wondering. Is it somebody who's here for this and people here for this? If we just jump into discussion to have that. We're gonna do things a little bit out of order because I know we have people here for specificity. Um, let's, uh.
Let's, under discussion items, we have the building exterior projects update. And I know that people... Let's see. The company that's doing the work, I was told, was going to be here. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm at the center.
Yeah. So...
You're on. All right, it's easiest way to get solved. Chairman Thompson, Superintendent Arnold, members of the board. So we've started with the siding projects. And the moment we selected Emmerich Construction, we have been moving sort of at lightning speed. This is Luke Neal. He is the project superintendent. Also Cory Loman, who is the president of Emmerich, wanted to be here, but he is traveling and we couldn't get the Zoom going, so that's all right. So what we've been doing, once we... our first meeting, we really got going into a rough timeline of the projects. We looked at permits that we might have to get. And then just sort of looked at, see what type of pre-planning and materials and information we needed to really get going. One was, Emmerich recommended that we get a... Since these are older buildings and you're not quite sure of the materials and the mastics that were used for the siding and the windows that we need to do a hazardous materials evaluation to see if there's asbestos and something out there. So we hired a company called Prism to do that. And we're gonna start doing that work just to see if we have any of those mitigation issues to deal with. We don't have, you know, some of those that, as built, we couldn't find everything from back in the day in some of those buildings. And also wanted to... so we, working with Architects West, did give us some updated drawings on the current exterior elevations, the existing conditions, what are the newer aluminum windows, what are the older ones, things like that. And they've delivered that. You know, and now we're really there just looking at the overall scope of work, estimating costs. We're getting some initial costs from Emmerich right now. I'll let Luke expand maybe on that, but we're sort of moving at lightning speed. But anyway.
So, yeah, Luke Neal with Emmerich Construction, project superintendent. And just want to start by saying thank you for the opportunity to work with the district. Really excited about the projects and the upcoming season. As far as the projects themselves, really in the beginning stages, just have given the... some of the old drawings to the architects and then going through the drawings currently to make sure they match the existing conditions. As everybody here knows, the buildings have been added on and worked on for the last sixty-plus years. And so there's a lot, a lot of different windows, the sidings and everything that are consistent. And also just looking at the... Visiting the schools and then cutting the side and see what's actually there as well to help us get. We did last week a rough budget. And currently, and I am a superintendent, not the budget guy, but I will say currently they're roughly fifteen percent over on the three. But as we get the drawings nailed down, the scope, those become closer and closer and better to present to the board for that. Yeah.
Let's shoot for under, I think, correct?
Yes, that is always the goal.
Do you want to say roughly fifteen percent over on the three individually fifteen percent over or totality?
Good question. I don't have the answer to.
Okay.
I'll have to look at the...
Yeah, where is this?
I think individual.
Individually.
Yes, person who brought the paperwork.
Yeah, and make the middle one more, but we're looking at some of those. So, yeah, the elementary's cost estimates were a little closer and, you know, hopefully we can get some of those numbers down to fit within the budget we transferred over for this. The way the middle was coming a little higher. And so we're gonna start taking a look and seeing what that scope of work might be here.
Are you approaching it from the notion of replacing existing siding with similar type material or product? Or are we gonna be given any options about that?
Yes, we'll look at that for those options. Like, as you can see, most of it, like the lower half where snow sits, is rotten. Needs to be replaced. And then the upper half looks decent. It's old T-111, structurally fairly sound. And so for all the buildings, just to take a look and see how best we can go through and either replace all or parts, whatever works best for Luke and needs the district and the building itself for longevity.
They've... Are looking at if there's some alternative products besides T-111 that could be competitive and longer lasting and more durable, especially on the lower part. And so Emmerich's done some projects around here and has some ideas. And they've also... Kevin Cole with Architects West says he's had some, you know, products and stuff that... Other projects that they worked on have had. So they're gonna look at all options and just not pure replacement.
Okay.
Any other questions? The cost for the hazmat mitigation, do we know that or do you have that?
It's about eight thousand dollars for the study. That's just to see if we have any. If we have to get in there and we have areas that are hot, then I'm not sure what that would come in.
We would know till we know what the material is, right? Because then we know the situation, okay. And is that eight thousand for all three buildings or per building?
Yes, for all three, all three together.
Any questions? Any questions, Mike?
I don't think so. I, you know, parts of those buildings go back to the sixties, particularly middle school, I guess. So you might find something there in terms of asbestos or... But a lot of those additions were done, you know, from the eighties on. So it's not likely you're gonna have that much there.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks.
Next, we're gonna stay in discussion and go to the transfinder demonstration. Jessica?
I'm gonna keep going. Because I'll have to get locked in. And the key words are here, Jessica.
Can I just bring them up here?
Yep.
So I was bragging to the board about what you can do in your transfinder and how that helps us with the... Kind of figuring out where our kids are living and how we can maybe move them around to take... Release some pressure on Garwood and maybe add some kids.
Yeah.
John Brown and... Was talking about the program. And so... The rest of the board was just interested to see.
Yeah. So I recently got to be part of the Long Range Planning Committee meeting. And that's where I kind of showed this and did a demonstration.
Jessica, would you introduce yourself?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I'm Jessica Danner, Transportation Director.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I got you guys the printouts. I don't know if people are able to take a look at those. Usually takes a few minutes to get all of them. Okay, so this is all of our elementary schools.
Okay.
Attendants, that one's with me.
Okay.
So then all the colored dots represent, like all the green is for Spirit Lake Elementary. Yellow represents Athol. The red is Twin Lakes. Dark blue's Garwood. The light blue is Betty Kiefer. And then John Brown's the purple one.
Oh, that little...
Yeah. Yeah, and then all the little light blue dots, those are like middle school, high school students. So their population isn't listed here.
Okay.
Yep, and then the numbers represent the schools. So this really helped when we were at that meeting because we could lasso the kids, you know, count how many were in certain neighborhoods and decide if that would be a good move, maybe to a different elementary school to help overcrowding.
Okay, so, yeah, you can break it down to neighborhoods to determine.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you show them what that looks like really quickly?
Like the Brookshire?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be great. So here you have the Brookshire neighborhood, and this was one of the ones that we were talking about. So you can literally just lasso the students. And then it'll ask you what you want to look for in that zone. The students is what we generally pick, but I don't want to click on it because then it'll show student names and stuff like that. And then once the student list would come up, then you could filter that by grade, by school, stuff like that.
Okay.
And then I... go ahead and cancel that. So within that little, where you just were in Brookshire, can you go back to that and zoom in a little bit? There's a purple dot in there, so there's somebody in there who's zoned for Garwood, right? But the purple is John Brown, so they've zoned transfer to John Brown. So she can actually see within the zones where our zone transfer kids are sitting. Have transferred from one school to another.
Okay, that's great to see.
Yeah, this software has really helped us a lot because previous to this, we had all of our routes just on paper that were hand typed. And when we had to edit routes, it was hours and hours and hours of work to change that. And now that we have so many routes, especially with double routing, this has been very, very helpful.
That's great.
Yeah. Anything else specific you guys would like to see with that? Or any questions?
Nope, but I'm glad we have that now because, yeah, I didn't have questions before, but it was... there was no way to get the answer without, you know, it was too cumbersome. So that's great.
Yeah, it takes a lot of the backbreaking work out of it.
How long have we been using this program?
I started in 2019. I believe that fall was when we implemented it because my first summer was spent building the routes in here. So I got really good really quick at transfinders, so.
Okay. Can we look up towards Athol again, Athol and Spirit Lake area?
You can also see while she's doing that in that white box, like the one on one, the purple is John Brown. And you can see there's two hundred and forty kids attending John Brown. That school used to have five hundred and fifty kids, so it's being underutilized.
Wow.
So at the Long Range Planning Committee meeting, one of the things we talked about was can we grab some neighborhoods that attend Garwood and move them to John Brown to relieve the overcrowding of Garwood for next year while we figure out what we're gonna do about those.
Right, okay.
So that Jessica came in really handy. Because she was able to say, well, if we look at this part, this is what it looks like. She could lasso that group of kids and see how many were there. Sorry.
I was just looking at the... When she was zoomed out, Athol just looked like a big yellow blob. And there's one school up there, yeah.
Yeah, and look at all those... Athol is another one that is crowded. You can see the zone transfers out of Athol, all the other colored dots.
At least we have a really great picture of it now, visual. That's awesome.
Yeah, and if you guys need any more maps printed out or anything, just reach out and let me know what you want.
Okay.
I can work on it and get it for you guys.
Perfect.
Thank you, Jessica.
Yeah, I'm in trouble.
So going forward, that's the type of sorting you'll do to identify students that might be transferable from one area to another in order to balance things out. Which would be very helpful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
And then can you flick out of that table?
So we'll go back up to the action items. And we're gonna jump down to action item one point eight to approve or deny the naming or dedication of the high school baseball field as the John Schaefer Field.
Principal Everland is here.
Hi, guys. Good morning, Chair Thompson, members of the board, Superintendent Arnold, Ryan Everland, Principal of Timberlake High School. And with me tonight, I have John Schaefer's family and several other Athol and Spirit Lake families who spend a lot of time at Timberlake High School and given a lot to our community. Mr. Schaefer passed, and that was a big... A big loss for Timberlake, the Timberlake communities. And about that time, several community members started reaching out to me and strongly felt like he needed to be recognized. And all of them thought the baseball field would be a fitting spot for him to be... For it to be dedicated to him, and I agree with that. The letters of support speak for themselves, and I didn't ask for any of them. So it was neat, unsolicited for people to reach out. And I could go on and on about what John did in my time at Timberlake. And if you have questions, I'll certainly answer those. So I'm here tonight to ask for approval. The Booster Club will fund the project to make this happen.
Does anybody have any questions? Then I'll entertain a motion at this time, unless anybody else would like to speak in favor of it. Does anybody else want to speak? I don't want anyone to feel like they can't speak if they want to speak.
I'll speak.
Okey-dokey.
Ready to come up?
Sure, please. And if you can introduce yourself.
Sure. My name is Tim Crawley. I'm a patron. I was athletic director at Timberlake for a long time and just wanted to support John and what he did. We could, like Ryan said, we could be here till midnight talking about the things he did for our kids. And his support was unbelievable. Anytime I ever got in a bind, my first call, well, my first call was Peggy. But that's always, but my second call, whenever I really need something, was always Mr. Schaefer. And he never told us no. He found a way to make things happen. We did. Probably things that we probably shouldn't have done, but we did them to get things done. But he was a great man, great family, and a great supporter of our school. So this is very appropriate to honor him in this way. Thank you.
Thank you. On that note, I'll entertain a motion regarding either the approval or denial of naming or dedicating the Timberlake High School baseball field as the John Schaefer Field. I'd move to approve the dedication of the Timberlake High School baseball field as the John Schaefer Field.
Second?
I have the motion. In a second, to all papers, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bearing none, the motion carries.
Thank you.
And those of you who were here tonight, just to support that, if you want to stay for the rest of the board meeting, you may. Or are you...
Thank you for hosting. Jenna.
Thank you all for coming.
It's cooling down over here, so I'm excited. And we'll just keep going out of safety. So we're gonna go down to the pilot trial of the use of the vape detectors.
We have our armed district safety specialist, or district armed safety specialist.
Armed district safety specialist.
Yeah, I said it right, the first one, okay. John Hatcher and Brad Schultz. So John Hatcher is at Lakeland High School, and Brad Schultz is at Lakeland High School.
Do I have to say armed?
No.
I just interviewed.
Arm guard, I forgive you. First off, is it all right if I walk around?
Yes.
So, you may or may not know, vaping in the schools, secondarily, is a huge issue. So what I have here is a tote of, not all of them, but I would guess about 70% or so. Of the fakes that we have taken.
For familiar itself.
Just from Lakeland High School or not too close. They're nasty, disgusting things. Pass this one around. Yeah, these are.
That's a vape.
That is a vape, yes, found at the middle school.
Oh my gosh, and is that smell coming from that?
That's vape juice and nastiness that the kids are inhaling, burning to 200 degrees and sucking into their lungs.
Oh my gosh.
Oh my gosh.
So right on the side here is the button to activate it. Cat comes off. So this is like the screen right here, so sitting in class.
Oh my goodness.
Try it, mom. I was talking to Ryan before the meeting, and he has a box that's very similar to Timberlake High School.
Nice. Yeah, this is, so you can't tell me that this is part of a two certain rates. I don't know any adult that would need to hide their baby.
The bigger ones are more easier. Right.
No, it looks like a, yeah, it looks like a.
Tied to one. Yep. These are disposable too. You just buy them once. These you can refill, and it's another thing we get too, are the bottles of juice that they use to refill them. Go back, pull, recharge them. Kids are really sneaky with these, creative. They can sit in class and go like this. They do what they call zero hits, to where they take a big inhale, and your lungs will absorb a lot of the smoke. So when you exhale, just a very fine smoke comes out. Particles are still in the air, but they can get, or they'll sit like this in class. Let's clarify one thing. This is just from Lakeland Middle School. And this is only about 80% of them. This is not all of them. And we don't have, John doesn't either, the DAP pins, which contains the THC that we have confiscated from the students. Those have to go to RAPPD, because they become evidence.
How many of those have been confiscated?
Oh yeah, just this year at the middle school, I have four of them. Just this year. I think we're at five, five cases, about 70 tons total at high school. And they're easy to get.
Yeah, and see, how much do all these things cost? Where are they, I mean, I guess they're old enough to have jobs, or just.
What's the throwaway ones? So throwaway ones, 10 to 15 bucks, depends, on sale. Of course, the kids can't buy them themselves, they pay somebody to purchase them, so they might be paying, you know, a little more to get them. The bigger refillable ones, anywhere from 30 to 67 bucks. I have some of the bigger ones in here, the Maws. These type of guys. That was gross. These get up to 300 or 400 bucks.
Whoa.
They're really expensive. The bottles of juice that they can refill them with. This is Punt Punch. There's all different types of flavors. You can imagine that the kids, you kind of smell that free to smell.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, there might be some.
Are these those knives?
Yeah, those are some knives that they can use. It's kind of, I might just want to back for it. There's the ones that are steel rubber gloves. Were voluntarily given from places that they stay in rubber gloves.
At the school?
Yes.
Rubber gloves.
Yes, they'll hide them in.
Right, right, yeah, no, I did it, yeah, okay.
Anyway, it's a big problem. It's a huge problem, and I hate to throw it on you guys, but it's the truth. It's out there, and we're fighting this a lot, as much as we can. Nicotine and the products in vapor are terrible. I mean, there's arsenic, there's all kinds of stuff, and this vape juice, that are not good for our kids, not good for anybody. But I think they'll agree, our kids are the most important. So, we have a solution, a partial solution to help us fight this problem in the schools. These are, I know you guys have heard about it, the vape detectors. They're a very complex unit on the inside. They hook up to a data line and powered over IP, I think they call it. So they don't require an outlet. You can put them in the ceilings, bathrooms. And what those detect are multiple things, and actually, they're environmental sensors, because they detect a lot of this vape. The vapor THC index is obviously on their temperature, humidity, noise level, air quality in general, which, I'm not a scientist, but I have a whole list of different things that it can detect in there. They tamper, if somebody were to mess with them, this sets off the alarm. Motion, and some of a different one that I don't have, they'll actually detect keywords. So if somebody was in a bathroom and said, fight, or gun, or knife, and you programmed the words, it'll alert on those words, and it will send us, or whoever has the app, a text message and an email. And then allow us to respond appropriately for that. The sound, and everything's adjustable too. The humidity, you can go in and set it at a certain level, so it'll pick up humidity once it's a certain bar, send us an alert, the vape index, the THC, the noise, you can set to certain decibels on these. They're a complex little unit. They pick up the vape and THC, not by, like a smoke detector in your house has a little infrared, a little mirror on the other side, and the smoke passes through that and sets it off. These actually sample the air, so the zero hits aren't going to affect these. They constantly sample the air, they pick up items in the air, and they set the alert off through that, so. It's looking for a lot of different chemicals. So as I said, when it's triggered, it sends an alert to any cell phone with the app, with the proper, the proper pocket. You can then register that app, so you can just download it and get the alerts. And it also sends an email. They're also timestamped, so that we care for, not, it will respond right away. We could go back to the cameras, and note this time, it went off, so we could look and see who went into the bathroom and who went out of the bathroom. They'll do it that way. The response would be us, admins, whoever had the app, and whoever was there to respond.
So will everyone have the app, meaning all of you along with all admin, or?
If they wanted to, sure. I would have the app, but it wouldn't be tied to Brad's school, it'd just be to Lakeland High School. And then they're all labeled too, so it'd be whatever we call the bathrooms, senior bathroom, 1, 2, 3, 4. However we decide to do that. Who tells where you go. So that's kind of the same thing, it's just a different, different model. But I have got this working, I have it up in my office, and I didn't test the vape, I promise. I did the decibel reading, I clapped my hands, I played with the sensor, and boom, my phone chimed up with something. It would be a great tool, and it did turn, which we'll get into a little later, at our school. So if one of these alarms were to go off, we'd respond beyond there. We would pull a student as they come out of the bathroom, hey, let's go to the office. Our environmental sensor went off, what were you doing in the bathroom? Nothing. We have reason to believe that you ordered something. Go ahead and empty your pocket up. That's as far as we can go. Right? Like John said, they hide them.
Right.
So what, what is the least intrusive way for us to find a hidden vape? Would be our handheld note detector, just to run it across their body. If it alerted, we can tell them, hey, it alerted right there, what are you holding? Wherever it's at, without touching the student, making the student retrieve that item. This, right here, is the least intrusive way to keep the vapes out of our school. We pull in five kids, do our little searches on them, maybe we recover two vapes that way. Because the kids say, I don't have anything. So now we're letting, we're letting three of them go back into the school, possibly with a vape on their possession. So the use of this handheld note detector would be huge in helping us to combat this, this issue of the vapes. Because you'd be surprised where they hide these things. So to us, this is just another tool that we can use, right? What's the high school required to do at dances? Or at the Battle of the Paddle? And I've helped John with this. What do they do to all the students coming in? Breathalyze them. Breathalyze them. Okay, technically, is that, is that a search? Can be, okay, and that's required, to come in, to participate. It's just another tool for us. And like we've said, it's, to us, it's just all about keeping these schools safe. What's the best way for us to do this? I've talked to the Director of Security for Corlins School District, Dean Keck. They have them in their middle schools and their high schools. They have some active ones, and then they have dummy ones, so the students never know which bathrooms they're going to be in, okay? Post falls, they utilize them. Okay? I was supposed to have a letter of support from a principal at, oh man, I can't remember what school. It's a friend of Mr. Burge's. But anyway, he was on the right letter, I didn't, I didn't get it. Was it River City?
It was River City.
River City, so I don't have that. He says these things were fantastic, and it's really helped to eliminate the problem. This is at their middle school. So. Bringing it up as a tool. Our drug testing program in our high school is amazing. I mean, it is such an awesome tool, whether we, they're able to test one kid, or 20 kids, or all of them, once a month. And it's, it's a great tool. And I had talked first hand with kids that are able to say no to drugs in a respected way by their peers. The old just say no campaign, drugs aren't cool, that doesn't work. I mean, that's, that's not, that's not a good tool. Kids don't have enough with that to do it. So it sounds great on TV and everything else, but the drug program is a way that they can say, no, I don't want to get caught. I'm in the sport, wrestlers, football players, volleyball players. I've talked to kids from all different sports. It's a great tool, and it's respected. If somebody says, no, I don't want to, I don't want to hit that, or I don't want to do any of that, it's okay. I mean, it's fine. And if the kids on both sides, I've been able to talk to, and yeah, he doesn't, he doesn't use drugs, but he's in the sport, so he'll get it. I mean, it's a great thing. So drug testing is, is amazing. What I want to do is use these as the same tool. So kids go into a bathroom, I'm not going to vape, I don't want to get caught. There's vape detectors in the bathroom room, they're going to do it. Or if somebody hands them one, no, I'm not getting caught. I'm not going to have to do Mr. Hatcher's cessation class. What a boring class. They're a great tool that we can, that we can use. It's a tool, not just for us, it's for our kids, and that's what it's all about. A reason for them, another reason to say no, in a respective way. Nobody wants to get caught. The cessation class, I teach that in the school. I started, well, I got certified. I'm just getting ready to start my third class this Wednesday. Had two graduate, the first four, four classes. I started with four on the second class, only two of them graduated. One of them ended up in jail, one moved out of the district, so. But the other two graduated. It's great. Something I offer, it's a great tool. What I want to do is not just send Officer Hudson, the SRO Officer Hudson, to every kid and have them write a ticket. I want to help these guys to quit. And give them the tools and to the best that I can, help them do that, so.
So then, when you catch the kids with the vapes, are they going to the cessation class?
Yes, if they're required. Well, no, I take that back. They're given a choice. Life's not a choice, right? So our kids are going to get the same choice, you choose accordingly. So you can get a ticket, and you know, tickets, just like a traffic ticket, it's a $74 ticket. You can get 10 of them, and they're all 74 bucks apiece. Different from something else I heard. There's no arrest record or anything else like that that the tickets go to, they're just a citation. So you can get a ticket, or you can go to four hours of class with me and, and not get a ticket. But you have to graduate the class, and you have to show up. But I also take their vapes, and that's why I don't have a lot of them. They're in envelopes with the name of the gate on it. And if they get caught again, then they can get a ticket for both of them. So it's kind of something we hold in, more of a reason not to do it in the school. Okay, it's a cost. Keep going. So, is there any questions so far in any of this stuff? Nothing? So, here's where you guys are going to puke a little bit. Coverage and all the secondaries, keeping it real. And all the secondary schools would be 48 sensors, and talked to Ryan, and talked to all the principals. They're a thousand bucks a piece. It's $48,000. Minimum coverage would be 25 sensors. We kind of looked at certain bathrooms, our hotspots, and so that'd be $25,000. Bare minimum coverage with utilizing some of the fake sensors would be 10 sensors and 17 fake sensors, which would be $13,060. It's a lot of money. And as a full coverage would be great, it would be awesome, but also as a patron and a tax-paying member of our community, I don't think we need that. I think that's too many. I would be upset if you guys did vote to put that in all the schools. There are a lot of grants available. Superintendent Arnold sent me a great one. It's for a million and a half bucks. It's for 50 schools, around $35,000 each school, just for the state of Idaho. It closes March 1st, I think, was the closed day on that. And then they award it June 1st. There's lots of areas we can get some money. If you guys definitely wanted to pay for some of them, that would be great. But really, what we're looking for is just to be able to use these, your permission to put them in schools. Well, we'll work on the money. We'll make it happen. We'll find some grants. We'll do what we got to do.
Did you find out on the software? Was that going to continue? What's, what's the continued price of?
So there is. So Burkada, they don't have a yearly fee. They push the updates. They say they're good for about 10 years. You buy them, you put them in, you forget them. If they break, or if they go bad, you got to buy a new one. So there's another company, Sense, and I forget the FlySense or something like that. They're $50 each a year. But they also, 100% coverage if they break, if they fall, if anything happens. The software updates are all included. They're a good brand, too. Bet us a warranty on. So that, yes, $50 a year for some, nothing for others. There's quite a few different companies and places to go.
Other than the device itself, is there any potential? I know there's always potential for vandalism or, you know, destruction somewhere. How would you deal with that, or do you put it under another cover?
So like I said, there's alerts for tamper alerts. If somebody were to mess with it, it'd send out a signal. They also make cages for some. You can put cages around them. That'd be the best. Somebody's going to rip it out of the zero, I'm going to find them.
John's really good at that.
Because most of our cameras, in John's school and my school, we have coverage of all the bathrooms. So we can see who's coming and who's going out of that bathroom. So if something were to happen. So if something were to happen, timestamp both and compare it, and see who's, who came out. If I could add to this really quick. It, it's great for vapes and drugs, but these are also such a, a great tool for knives and other items that kids bring into the school. This is an important one, if you guys would just please consider allowing us to use these. Not looking to hit every kid that comes in the door, just for certain times, for certain kids, these are a great tool. I have to search kids every day, coming into the school, kids that have brought an act into the school for the wrong reasons. Be careful with that. But that's part of their reentry program back into the schools, after you get searched. So I'm promising, not only our staff that know about the incident, but all the rest of the kids that don't know about the incident, that this kid does not have a weapon in him today. And that is hard to do. That's, I can't promise that, just going through their bag and looking at them, okay, go. This tool would fix that. Whose backpack is it? Can I pick it up? No search it. Kid rides the bus. Okay? Where's the weapon at? In here? Gets off the bus, finds the bush tied behind, I know they're not gonna search me, hides the weapon. Here's search my bag. Then he's in the school with a weapon. And if we had these, we'd find it. Cause this is gonna alert to any metal object that's hidden on him or her. As long as these are important.
Is there, is there metal in all the vaping items?
And these again, these are thirty-five bucks. We'll, we'll buy our own, I bought this one with my own money. My school has one too. And it just sits on my desk. We don't use them.
Who said you can't use them?
It's not in our policy.
We haven't had any board action.
We discussed it, but we didn't go any further.
Was the forty-eight thousand dollars a flat rate?
Yes, that's based on a thousand dollars apiece. All right. Any other questions?
So the, what we're looking at here on the screen now is that, oh, there is no cost, that's just how many items that were needed, but there's no cost to them. This is what we had last year.
Those are the vape stats, yeah.
Oh, I see, okay.
Corlin Christian Schools, I think it's, I'm sorry, I think it's easier to say what schools don't have these already. And Sandpoint High School is the only one that I know of, other than us and Turbide. These are everywhere, vape detectors. And so are metal detectors.
Thank you both for your attention. Alright, so do we want to have more discussion on the?
Two fingers, Michelle.
I'm her, I'm her computer manager today.
Do we wanna have more discussion on the, doing a pilot trial for the vape detectors?
You know, I'm in favor of certainly doing a trial, I'm, I'm in favor of both instruments, I guess I would say. Although, I would like to see some protocols developed, as to how they're used.
I would feel more comfortable if we had policy.
Yeah, cause we don't have any policy.
With the protocols that go in. For the metal detector.
Any comments, Dave?
No.
I heard a lot of concerning things, that's for sure. Man, I don't have any comment.
You don't wanna have further discussion?
Well, like I said, I heard a lot of disturbing things, I didn't know we were breathalyzing kids, we have nothing in our policy that covers that. Though our parents are aware of that, and if they are, where's the form of consent that they're signing?
Yeah, that's the first time I've heard that.
Yeah, the cessation class, I wasn't aware of either. Yeah, the cessation class and the, the training and all that, we have no policy procedure, anything on that. Yeah, I just, yeah, I don't, I don't have anything further to say, but I do think we have some work to do to fix what's already being done.
Who invented the breathalyzer, the battle for the? Okay. Within our policy? Same with prom?
Okay.
So you're for the prom?
I say all the two terms that I know of that we use.
Interesting. We did all homecoming? Really?
Well, I went to the seniors.
The homecoming dance?
Yes, the dance.
Okay.
And I went to the game, I didn't see anything. And grad night, yeah, senior night.
Okay, so we're using it on significant events, for the seniors specifically?
High school.
High school, but it sounds more like senior events, grad night is the senior event.
Right, homecoming is an all-school event.
And prom, junior. And then the Battle for the Paddle? Did everybody? Did Timberlake use it for backwards prom?
No.
They did? They do?
They did not.
They did not?
Sandpoint and us both did, and have for the last couple of years. And I can clearly see the gentlemen, their frustration in trying to do their job to the level they believe there's an expectation of. And I, and I get that. You know, for me, and, and this is my own, I struggle with... We spend, and I know there are issues, but we, it seems that we spend so much time on things that, in my brain, are not educational. Spending a lot of money, and I know there's issues, and we have to address these things, I get all that, but it just, it's just a hard, hard thing to swallow. Doing all this with students, I mean, why can't they just go pay the seventy-four dollar ticket? Take the thing from them and make them go pay the seventy-four bucks. I mean, I think the seventy-four dollars is gonna make somebody pretty upset, one way or the other, I mean... And that's the other thing, is this smoking cessation thing, see, all those things in my head now. You know, how are the parents notified, do the parents even know? Because now the kids chose to do the cessation versus pay the seventy-four dollar ticket.
The parents are part of that conversation, so they, they make that decision toward their child.
Yeah, so, you know, part of the routine disciplinary procedure when an incident takes place.
And it only is offered to them, I believe, the first time, right? So the second time they're caught, they then get two tickets, because they get the one that they earned the first time that they didn't get, because they went to the class. And then the second one. And moving forward, that's all, it's just a ticket every time.
And the seventy-four dollar ticket would be a deterrent to others, if they paid sixty bucks or a hundred bucks or something for the item itself, the seventy-four would be somewhat.
And that's if they go pay it, that's just a citation.
I think the, the intent of the class, at least, then giving parents the option to have the kids take the class or even pay the ticket, is to try to teach the kids what they're actually putting into their bodies when they're vaping, because they really do think, when you talk to them, they really do think that they're making a healthy choice for themselves, because it's not a cigarette. Everybody knows that cigarettes cause cancer. We don't have any idea what the long-term effects of vaping are likely, because it's just started, and so, so parents are, typically will opt for the, the course, to try to provide some education for the kids. The goal is to help them quit.
So the, the students who fail the drug test for nicotine, and students caught with a vape, or vaping, whatever, all do the cessation class. Yeah, we would need to see that curriculum too, because we haven't seen that material at all.
Now, we did the Catch Your Breath, which was the anti-vaping, that's the one I just saw. I can ask them to bring the drug cessation.
So would you like to have further discussion on this, Ramona?
I know they wanna do like this pilot program or something, I just, I, I would feel more comfortable if we had parent input. You know, or if we even wanna wait that long, I don't know, I, I can tell you right off the bat, I can't vote for it. I, and not unless I had parents by the hordes telling me they thought it was a great thing, I just can't do it. I, I just, the schools just are becoming more and more and more of this, they look no different than the jail, and now the kids sort of mimic the same things that happened in a, in a jail. It's like we run mental health programs, you know, we're wandering kids, and I know times have changed, you know, we've done all these things, but I had to fight for curriculum. I just, I, I can't vote for it. If we can get feedback from the community and the parents, you know, but to me, it's just become more and more an intrusive thing, and especially after I heard about the breathalyzer and the cessation class, and, and I know the intention is, you know, not nefarious, I, I get that, but I just, I, I can't vote for it, so.
Yeah, I, I think part of the trade-off is, you'll commonly hear people in this profession talk about the fact that it's difficult to educate kids if they're not mentally, socially prepared, except. And kids' attention is more on, you know, these kinds of activities as opposed to classroom activities, they're not gonna learn what they need to be learning. So I think the goal is to divert that attention back to where it belongs, partly by deterrent and partly by education itself. And I would hope, if we did a trial, you know, we could collect enough data to demonstrate that it's a worthwhile thing. If it's not, if that data doesn't appear, then we dump it, I would say.
Yeah, if, if it's gonna be used as a deterrent, then we should see, if that's the purpose of it, then we should be able to collect data over ninety days that we can have them up. We should see a decrease in the number of vape infractions, if it's gonna work.
Well, and knowing that there's grant, you know, there, that would be my pull, is that if this can be funded with outside sources, then I think it would be more beneficial than having to figure out, you know, where do we cut in the budget to move money in that direction, when, as Ramona said, we're still fighting to get curriculum or back into our schools.
I, I could put together a short survey that we send to the parents, asking, letting them know what the vape detectors do, what the intent of them is, and then whether or not parents would be comfortable. You want the input from the parents. There are, there are, we've had a lot of parents who have been appreciative of just our, our athletic parents, whose kids do end up with a positive nicotine result. Because they didn't, a lot of times they didn't even know, and so then they're able to work with their kiddo at home too. Cause the reality is, is when they're vaping nicotine, they're getting a lot more nicotine than you do when you smoke one cigarette. And so the, the rapidity with which kids become addicted is great, because of the high dose of nicotine, and so we're dealing with an addicted group of kids, right? It's, it's not, four classes isn't gonna fix the problem, it might start the process of understanding what you're doing to your body, and causing you to think about it. But they're not gonna, not taking another hit of nicotine, because it takes work to overcome an addiction. But parents can get involved, so we have a kiddo at one of our high schools right now, whose parents are seeking a prescription from their doctor for a nicotine patch, to try to help wean their kiddo off of the vaping, because it is an addiction. So it's part of the process of working with families to help the kids.
And if you want a really scary thought, what happens if somebody introduces fentanyl into a vape?
Oh, they already have, they're dabbing it all the time. And we actually had a kiddo at one of our high schools I was talking to who got caught with dabbing THC. And when they do that, it's like smoking twenty-seven joints at the same time, that's how much THC they're doing. And I asked the student, you do realize, right, that people are lacing this stuff with ethanol, and you could die. And he said, yeah, I know they're doing that, but it's, that's not gonna happen to me.
That's always the answer.
Yeah, and they just are invincible, you know, and immortal in their, in their teenage years, and so they definitely are aware of it, and it is happening, so. We have, we've had to use the Narcan once, in one of our schools.
We have? When was this?
When was that? Was that what, last year?
No, I think it was the beginning of the year, I was gonna say it was around October.
So this year?
Mm-hmm. I'm pretty sure it was this year, I got the wish, it was at the start of school, I thought. We thought it was last year? It was one of them.
I can't, it was, I thought it was last year. That is something I would commend to the board.
Thank you. Good to be captain of the team. Alright, so... You want the survey correct, or am I?
Well, I mean, I don't wanna delay the thing, that would just be my, you know, I would, I guess for implementation, or for the parents to be notified that this may happen, or, yeah, what are their thoughts on it? You know, I mean, because ultimately, it are, it is their, their students, it's their children.
If we did the, if we did the pilot in conjunction with the survey, then, because at the end of the pilot, the board's gonna have to make a decision about whether or not to allow it to continue. You would have, we'd have the data results, and we'd have the survey results from the parents that you could use to help inform your decision? Or would you prefer to have parent in, information before the trial?
Well, I think the parents need, if the board decides to do the pilot program, I think that the board needs to be, make the parents aware of that, if the board decides to do that. I don't know, I would have to think about it, I don't know that I would change my mind, you know, but I definitely would want the parent feedback, you know, guardian feedback, for implementing, you know, something like that in the schools, I mean, I get vaping's illegal. I mean, I get vaping's illegal, but there's a lot of other things. And we did talk about this, uh, when we referred to supports with the idea, there are a lot of other things that the device does, um. I mean, it's more than just for vaping, you know, it has far-reaching, more reaching capabilities. You know, and we're monitoring conversation, keywords, and we're monitoring, you know, other things along with video and audio and.
I don't think there's any video.
It's, uh,
Yeah, you know, and I really would be more comfortable having a basic set of protocols than even for a trial program. And these guys kind of know what they're thinking in terms of how, how it's gonna be viewed, how it would be implemented with them, and the administration and so forth. But I really would be more comfortable if, even if they did it, actually sat down and spelled out, you know, how they intend to use this thing.
Yeah, I agree, I would say it.
So, I could ask them to do that, and in the meantime, I could put together a survey of the parents, guardians, just to get input from them. And then at the March board meeting, I could ask them to come back with their full report, or we could present it for them on their behalf. And, and then I could present the, um, results from the parent survey.
Yeah.
And then, so we could table it first and then we can make some decisions based on.
Move to table until the March meeting?
Okay.
I do it.
So we have a, uh, motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Um, we need to include in that survey too about the, uh,
Wap detectors.
The wand, the, yeah, the, uh, wand-ing metal detectors.
Okay, so we'll go back up to the top two, um, under action items, to supplemental resources, um. Uh, there look like there were a few books on here, uh, that there were some concerns about. So I'm wondering if we could have the librarians weigh in on them?
On those, I have it.
The, yes, which, I had it all on my own thingy, so, uh.
So, and just to clarify, remember that, um, if it was gonna go just in the library, then we're gonna go through our process that we're still building, but these are specific for, um, classroom use, which is why we're taking them to the approval. So if there is an item with a concern, um, I can, uh, have the librarians to read them and then give us some feedback if they follow up for March.
I would prefer that.
Okay.
Um, I did read, um, the, we set the dark on fire, I did read, not just there, but I went and did some research on that one and thought, this is, this is interesting. So I would like the librarian's perspective.
Be teachers for those, or?
What's that?
The, these would be for librarians or teachers?
Teachers.
Yeah, teacher-specific, so they would be used.
As a read aloud, possibly a discussion.
Okay.
Um, and there, the reason, the reason why there are several of them, so, um, we asked them if they know that if they're doing a new syllabi for second quarter and they know that there's gonna be titles that they wanna use instead of trying to, you know, um, get them through and maybe miss their deadline, just if they already know what they want to use, they can send it ahead of time, which is why there's more. Not all of these books will be used, it was just kind of within the genre that they were considering, based on what was recommended, so, um.
So then are none of these going to end up in our library?
Um, they may or may not end up in our library, for sure classroom use, but it doesn't necessarily mean it would go back in the library. So it could be what the classroom teacher has, and it's just what they're gonna use as a book discussion, or they're gonna pull an excerpt from it, so it doesn't necessarily mean it'll go in the library.
Okay, and see, my purpose for having the librarian read it is they're coming from a whole perspective of
Right, yeah, yeah.
family, child.
Oh, yeah, no, I get that, I just want, I didn't know if you.
No, these were from teachers, yes.
Right.
I know these books are.
There might be a lesson plan.
Right, right.
Even, I, I was wondering what the lesson was in the, in the book. And I did find interesting too, is, um, I didn't read it, but there is a whole read aloud of, um, the one that had concerns. It's, uh, that last stop on Market Street, uh, on YouTube. So there are a lot of them that are read alouds, you can just listen to it.
Several of them are like that, and so that's honestly, um, Janelle reads most of them, but, um, we've sent links out to parents who have had follow-up that you can re- hear the read aloud and then they'll give a discussion about it, specific to YouTube, so a lot of them, you can find them, so.
That bothers me.
Well, there are some books that, like, uh, Junie B. Jones is a great example, there's, it's, it's written from a kindergarten perspective, so she speaks like a kindergartner, and, which is kind of the fun part of reading it out loud, so.
Oh, and then when we have like, um, the, Then Later His Ghost by Sarah Hall, 'cause I do go to that, and it does pop up with a link that you have to, can we have whoever wants it to just take that and PDF it, so we can actually read it? Especially when it's, when it's coming from a source like that, that's not necessarily the book format.
So what I'm hearing you say, are you guys comfortable if I send this to Board Chair Thompson? I will put a list of the ones that I'm saying are flagged, so that we're just, there's just clear on that I am flagging the right ones to have Janelle or Melany read. And then, um, any ones that are a link where you're gonna have to go into a link, we can PDF it, and then, um, I can have the librarians read, and then they can come back for March and give some feedback. Is that good?
That would be good.
I just wanna make sure that what I think you guys are flagging is the right ones, that, 'cause there are comments, and like the Junie B. Jones ones, I don't know that we'd flag that one, just because of the grammar, but some of the other ones, so I just wanna make sure we're clear, okay?
Yeah, 'cause there's quite a few that the, the group is, or the committee as a whole, each person was like, no credit, it's
Yeah.
good to go, but there's a few that have some
Right.
concerns.
Mm-hmm. While we're talking about books, can I just ask one quick question? We have several novel sets in the district that we've had since Bob was the superintendent, one of them. And when we adopted the, um, journeys and collections through Hope and Flint, they came with novel sets, so that was part of the adoption. Um, but we've not brought any of those novel sets to the board for approval, because we just did what we did with all the library books, and it was just, they were grandfathered in. I just wanna make sure that you're comfortable with them, that you don't want us to break those.
And to add to that, we call them the protected list, so for instance, we actually have class sets of some of them. So we have thirty of them, and they're in the libraries in a protected place where if another, like, so Garwood has three or four at fifth grade, and then maybe Baby Kiefer has three or four at fifth grade. And so we only have one set of, you know, like, let's say Hatchet. And so then all six schools, you know, can check it out and use it, but it's, we call them protected because they're, they're a class set of, you know, thirty. And so they go along with our series with journeys, um, several of them, and so we have this list and and they're are in our libraries as well, but.
Right, but when you brought the curriculum forward, that binder was made with all of the books in there, so that we were made aware of what, you know, the reader system. Yeah, exactly.
We just wanted to make sure that you were good with that. We have some requests to add to that, and so those new ones would come to you, 'cause they're new.
Okay.
Um, but, um, I don't think we've ever showed you just like that list, and it's just in isolation, so we just wanted to double-check. It's in the overall list, but not broken down by school and by.
But then, but the titles are there.
Right.
In the directory.
Okay.
Yeah.
Directory.
Okay.
But we just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page, and that
Correct.
you're, we're doing what you need us to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause a lot of our teachers use novel sets for their literature portion.
Okay. So aside from the comments that are, um, concerning, does anybody have any other comments about the supplemental curriculum?
Uh, how are we gonna, are we, are we gonna act on this tonight? And then so, how are we gonna divide it out?
We haven't gotten that far, Paul.
Oh, sorry.
I was just curious if anybody had any other comments or questions or concerns on maybe these, okay?
I, I thought it was interesting, and some of them, you know, one individual said, oh, this is a great book, I had no issue, and somebody else took it to task.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, um.
It's nice getting to see them all in the same box for that reason.
Yes, it is.
Good job, Board Chair Thompson. It was her idea.
It is, yes, it's good, 'cause then you can kind of see what the flow is. Um, so yeah, I would say that, um, when we, when I called for a motion, whoopsies. We do also on the table the library books, we never, we, that wasn't put on for a motion on the last board meeting, which Janelle came and spoke to the longer list of books that had been tabled. Um, and she does have a recommendation on there of some books that she feels would not be beneficial for our libraries. So we do need to consider, um, those books as well, so we can do two motions, because they're two totally different areas. Um, I just want to make sure that when we do the table, we also take into consideration the denied books, um, based on the library's recommendation. So that being said, um, I'll entertain the motions with regard to the curriculum on the supplemental, uh, resources for board consideration and the table library books.
In an effort to differentiate.
Yes.
Uh, I would move that we approve those listed with no negative or objectionable comments.
Okay. On both resources, or just the supplemental?
Just the, just this list, yeah.
Okay, on the supplemental resources, okay, list.
That most have been done.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving to the table library books.
I wish I would've, uh, I thought I highlighted this, but I guess I didn't, this one. I don't remember which ones it was that she said.
Right at the very bottom, yeah.
It's the Shredder Man. Studying Charlotte, Crossfire, and then Colleen Hoover books.
And currently on our approval list, they are just listed on the table, and I can easily just move them to deny.
Okay.
Okay.
I didn't make any changes to that list until this, so.
Okay.
Okay, so the ones that she's recommending that were removed are Shredder Man, A Study of Charlotte, Crossfire, and the Colleen Hoover books. Um, the others, uh, which are, uh, The Girl in the Castle, The Nature of Witches, Once Upon a Broken Heart, The Gilded Ones, and that's it, so, um, so it's really only one, four of those that she's saying are okay, and all the rest should not be used for.
Mm-hmm.
Um, approved. Why didn't we table these before, it was just all the comments? To have her go through and re-end based on the, the comments?
Correct.
I'm trying to remember what grade that would be on the board.
Most of them are high school.
Most of these are high school books?
Shredder Man, I think, is, um,
Elementary.
medical school, elementary, yeah.
Yeah, but she said that wasn't her recommendation.
Yeah.
So, um, I guess the, uh, the gilded ones, that would be, uh, high school also.
Mm-hmm, it's like the maze rather than the Hunger Games.
Okay. Okay, now, so Once Upon a Broken Heart is also high school. And then, but, so it looks, I think you're ready, it looks like all of them she might have mentioned were high school, yes, they're all high school books. So what do we wanna do, if this is accept her?
Well, we would need.
The recommendation?
Yeah, we would need a motion for the tabled, um, library books to either approve or deny them. Because they were tabled.
Yeah. Um, well, my motion would be, I don't know if I can look at all these, uh, is that we accept the recommendation of the librarian, um, with the exception of The Nature of Witches. That we um, deny that, or it needs to come with some kind of warning or something. Um, he's just reading the title, does it tell you that the main character kills her parents, her best friend, and her teacher? I think that's a little dark. Some students might not be able to handle that, so that would be my little motion.
So which ones are, oh, approving that?
So they, if we, uh,
Girl in the Castle?
Mm-hmm.
And Once Upon a Broken Heart?
Correct. And the gilded ones. And the gilded ones. So you don't have any more information on that, um.
Second.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Chair Thompson, I'm sorry, I got very clear on the motion. I have move to accept the recommendation of the librarian with the exception of The Nature of Witches, or that we deny that, or that it come with some kind of warning. So I'm not, I'm not mature.
Okay, the motion is to deny, yes, to, to accept the librarian's, uh,
Recommendation.
Recommendation with the exception of The Nature of Witches. Which means it would not be approved.
Before we leave curriculum, can I ask just to clarify a question of the board? Um, the board approved the use of the curriculum Y Tri, um, for Mountain View, that was brought by Mountain View. Um, we have another high school that is interested in using that with, um, some of our kids. But the, when we went back and listened, the way the motion was stated, I think, we think it was specific to Mountain View, so, um, do we need to bring that back then to use? Typically, when you approve a curriculum, it's approved for the whole district, but the way that that motion was made just made it sound specific to Mountain View, so I just, we just need a little clarification.
I think you're good. Yeah, we're good for one school.
Want to be a group for the rest?
Okay.
At the secondary.
Right.
Okay. Just for clarification.
Got it.
All right, moving on to, uh, board policies. Uh, we have the Speaker of the Classroom Amendment School Functions Policy twenty-three forty-five and then Policy twenty-three forty-five P, which is the procedure. We also have the Draft Policy twenty-three forty, Controversial Issues and Academic Freedom. Uh, Policy twenty-three forty F-one, which is the Parental Option Form for Sex Education. For, uh, Form twenty-three, or Policy twenty-three forty F-two, Parental Option Form for Controversial Issues. And then a draft, uh, twelve thirty of the Duties of the Treasurer, which was, um, modified a smidge because we also have the Treasurer Job Description on the agenda. So, does anyone have any questions or concerns about any of these policies or the changes that were made or presented, et cetera? I do want to look at, wait, no, that's not gonna work yet. The concern on this one.
Are you looking at the form itself?
I am.
I'm wondering if, yeah, I'm wondering if that needs section heading? That one, you know, that, the first one obviously is an opt, um, out. And then the second one is an opt-in. I'm wondering if they need headings that, um,
Kind of delineate that?
Yeah, so that when the parent looks at it, they know that they're you know, basically what we're doing is we're asking parents to make a choice. They're either opting in or you're opting out, one of the two.
Well, and when Anita spoke, cause she had specifically.
That's where we talked about the minute we put.
Right, but it was just on the controversial issues, it wasn't on the sex education.
Oh.
Um, it's on the controversial issues ones, and I just noticed that, I didn't realize it, um, before. But it's teacher and it's opt-out title slash activity. Um, where it should be teacher and then it should just say title, activity. I'm removing opt-out, however, your comment that maybe we need to basically state if you're going to opt-out, you sign this, if you're going to opt-in, you sign this. On both forms, so that parents understand you have to pick one. It's not necessarily.
You can't be passive.
No.
Mm-hmm.
But yeah, that opt-out title needs to be removed, the opt-out portion. So title, activity, whatever, that's fine.
Now it's for the controversial issues.
Yes, what would you like the ti, if you want it to be as clear, you're making a choice, do you have a specific narrative sentence that you want to include?
Well, I would say maybe we push it, we, you know, you've got teacher, title, activity, and then below that, you would maybe like have in a box, uh, to opt-in here, and then under that line to opt-out, you know, make it bold so that it's eye-catching.
Okay.
People see it, they know what they're looking at.
So do you want Rosanna and I to fix this and then bring it back in March, or can we fix it and then have you guys look at it?
I say we just do the modifications.
Okay. Yeah.
Cause there's no point in bringing her back for a.
We'll let you guys look at it, but just, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, cause it might need some instruction outs, outside of just the heading for each section, and then maybe bolding or italicizing and bolding they're removed from or participate in, so that it's
Yeah.
a little more clear.
Yeah.
We can play around with it.
Yeah.
Have us look at it.
Yeah, perfect.
Can we look at the, um, the treasurer's job duties?
We're not there yet. Oh, this one, okay, we are there, thank you.
You're welcome. Excuse me.
Yeah, you're fine.
It's the next one. I just have a couple of questions.
Oh, on the, uh,
The, uh,
Here, Rosanna?
Job.
Yes, okay. Oh, right, right-click that link. Yep, either one you're gonna open, right-click and then say open link in a new tab, it'll literally make it the full size, there you go. And now if you click the, the, up at the top, yep.
Oh, it's on that.
Yeah.
Um, I, it's on both, so I just, one of the questions I have, and, um, trustee, because I'm sure you're so good with the statute, but we read and reread Idaho Code thirty-three seven oh three. Can you help us understand what that was saying on the first, it says basically on the first Monday of the month, the treasurer shall call for all warrants to be, that are gonna be paid, and then that they all have to be posted on the door of the district office. Which we've never done. I don't even know, it was written in nineteen sixty-three and has not changed, so that was the last time it was modified, statute.
A little bit antiquated.
A little antiquated, so I just, it, it, it's one that you guys added. And so I just wanna make sure that I know what your expectations are for that particular statute. Cause we had no idea what it was asking us to be.
Well, probably back then, they didn't have the internet.
Right, you hand, you hand-rote everything out, people could see it.
Right.
Right.
Until they probably posted all their bills on the door, so patrons could see them.
So we post ours on the website.
On the internet, yeah.
Right, so I just wanna make sure we're meeting your expectations, because we didn't really understand that one.
Yes, well, I think we were, uh, combining all of them together, is what, all the different policies that were out there and trying to, uh, streamline it, so let's look here and see, um, This is at the front door of the county courthouse.
That's where the elementary school districts were, not an elementary school district. The next line says in all other districts, the calls shall be made by posting such notice on or near the main door of the administrative offices of the district.
Nineteen sixty-three?
Yeah.
Sounds like it's from the early nineteen hundreds.
I know.
Did you do this when you were the leader of the group?
Yeah.
No, we didn't even have, I mean, the internet was just starting.
Just barely.
When I got hired, yeah.
We hadn't, we hadn't gotten beyond the typewriter stage at that point.
I think the first computer class.
So the first half, it sounds like, is just for the county courthouse thing, I guess. The other half is in all other districts.
Right, with the exception of the treasurer of each school district on the first Monday of each month, on which there is sufficient money in the treasury to pay any outstanding warrants, shall issue a call for the warrants which
Right.
such monies will pay. Um, but we do that more than just the first Monday of the month. Um, so I just, that just was such a strange, um, statute and nothing we've done before, so I just wanna make sure that what we're doing is meeting the letter of the law and that, and your expectations.
It's probably one of those laws, like you can't ride a ugly horse in town. But they haven't taken off.
Or is there a needle to spin on the sidewalk if it's wooden?
Well, I mean, to me, it's just sort of, uh, seven oh three, thirty-three seven oh three, she caps it up there too, um, basically, it's just saying that you're gonna post once a month what was paid and who got paid and basically what we already get.
Okay, so there's, you're not, I just wanna make sure that you're not expecting something different, just because it's, it's.
You know, I guess if you wanna be on the safe side, you could ask legal counsel about it, but I don't see an agreement to do delineate them over there.
It just was added, so it caught my eye and I thought, ooh, are they, is it, well, I just wanna make sure it wasn't added because you felt like there was something we were missing.
Um, Yeah, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
I think it was just missing from the duties of the treasurer, I mean, if they're posting, I know, right, posting, um, this is who we paid, this is blah blah blah, I mean, what we already get anyways, you know? And as long as that, I think the other thing this does call for is as long as that's made public.
Right.
You know, like I know the city of Apple posts all their stuff at the post office, on the bulletin board, you know, we did it, and, you know, whomever, but ours is hopefully on the website, or, you know, if they go and look at our meeting minutes, they can see all that. Um, but yeah, I didn't, we were just cleaning up all there.
Okay. Thank you. You're still welcome. Can't make sure we were not missing.
Well, it does say that it is, I mean, regardless of when it was written, it is the law.
Right, I know. Yeah, start taping those to the door.
That's right.
I wanna know what the certificate of posting looks like. Showing the date and the place of posting and file it with.
It's supposed to be filed.
Yeah. So what does that look like? I mean, how do you certify?
Good on that, how current is this law right there?
Well, it's current because it's in effect, right. It ju, just because it wasn't, it was added in nineteen sixty-three doesn't mean that you can ignore it.
That link up there where it says how current is this is because there's a disclaimer that, um, state of Idaho, uh, doesn't hold this online to be accurate at any time. Um, unless you have the printed copy in your hand is basically what the disclaimer says.
For the book.
Well, I appreciate, thank you.
Oh, not worry. So, does anybody have any further discussion on these board policies?
On that policy?
On any of the ones that I.
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Unfortunately. The, uh, the policy on controversial issues and academic freedom.
Okay.
I mean, there are some wholesale changes in this, and I guess I'd like to hear from the committee, what the thinking was. Uh, as you, as you process through this, because I, I'm not really totally comfortable at this stage.
Well, there's, um, many more other people involved than us, so it's a conglomerate effort.
I understand.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, what, do you have a specific part? I mean, this again was just trying to mesh all the different policies together and.
Well, first of all, refresh my memory on, you know, what's red, what's blue, and I know black was existing.
Okay, yep, and so was the red, so the red came from our prior policy and, no, no. The red is language we've added.
Okay.
The blue came from ISBA.
Okay.
And the strikeout is stuff that some of us felt we didn't need to have in there.
So you put some ISBA stuff, but then strikeout.
It was, oh, right, it was existing, yeah.
Well, it's trying to decipher that, to start with.
Yeah. Yeah, because there were updates to their policy also. Um, and a lot of this happened, I think, because there was a started draft at one point in time, and then again, it just sort of sat there for a while. Um, and then to define a controversial issue is purely subjective, right, unless we're talking, so we would have to have a list, a list, a list, a list. You know, in some instances, there, there's just gonna have to be some understanding, and some of the language too that was removed from this is because it actually exists in the, um, was it the sex education policy, or one of the other policies, there were, there was overlapping of language.
Oh, there's some in here.
Yeah, be, between several policies, and it's like, oh, well, this really fits better in this policy, so, um, you know, and with all the recommendation we get constantly of, you know, narrow it down, narrow it down.
Twenty-three forty-five, the contro, the speakers in classrooms.
Oh, okay, twenty-three forty-five, yep, and this one, so the speakers in the classroom, controversial issues, and even the sex ed all sort of had a mismatch of overlapping language, so we tried to divide it also, make it more simple. So what is it that we're not comfortable with?
With, uh, with the chairman's permission, I'd like to ask Jason if he's had a chance to review this and any reaction he might have.
Okay.
No, I haven't.
No, you haven't had a chance to review it, or no, you don't have any comment?
I haven't, I haven't reviewed this.
Okay, okay.
Because certainly a lot of it impacts, you know, teachers in the classroom. I, I'm assuming we had some input on.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it goes.
It was sent out to teachers, parents, staff members.
Students, everybody gets the comment, and then, and what happens is all those comments, they all, all get sent out to the community. Everybody's free to comment, and then we collect all the comments, all the policies that exist, any updates, whatever, and then a bunch of us meet and then we decide, you know, we go through every single comment and pretty much implement all the comments we get, I don't know that there's ever really been comments from the.
And some of the comments are like, you know, that doesn't make any sense, can you make it clearer? So we have to clear it up.
So, can I give some context? When this first came up, it started with, we had some parents that asked the question about how we address controversial issues. We also had staff members that were asking, cause they were like specific to some of our, like our fourth grade units around, you know, civil war and some of those topics of how, like, how do we stay within the boundaries, and so they asked us to put together to look at this policy again, so we, we kind of got it from both angles, this did go out to everybody, and Rosanna, I'm not sure if I'm accurate on this, but my understanding was this was one of the policies that we had quite a bit of feedback on.
I believe so.
Um, sometimes we get, you know, twenty people, sometimes we get fifty to sixty people, just depending, this was one that we got a lot of feedback on. Um, with the idea that you, you know, it, we're not shying away from some of those issues, but we're making sure that we're being neutral in the approach, so that it's not being pushed, an agenda isn't being pushed, like, that we tried to word it. That was the committee's goal, was to word it in a way that it was just, we're addressing the topics, it's a neutral approach. So we're not pushing agendas while we're doing it. But it did come from multiple layers, it wasn't just the policy committee that brought it up, we got it from parents and teachers.
As an example, uh, number four, there's a big strikeout, and it reads, or do read at least, uh, all questionable materials and controversial issues shall be approved by the principal prior to instruction. Questionable materials and controversial issues shall be considered, topics not contained within the curriculum approved by the board. I'm assuming that you struck that because your expectation is that all materials will be approved by the board, or it doesn't happen.
That is correct. I don't know if that's why we struck it, but yes, the reality is all materials need to be approved by the board. The thing, and I, it's been a while since I looked at this one. But the intention is, if a teacher's gonna have a guest speaker, that guest speaker is vetted by the principal. If that guest speaker has materials that they wanna hand out or talk about or do, the principal needs to review it, and then it needs to come to the board to make sure it's approved to go before these kids. We've had an issue this year where nobody really knew what was going on, and that just doesn't work. When you have parents that are trusting that their kids are.
Yeah, and I certainly understand, and for the most part, agree with that, that the, the part that I always struggled with, having been a social studies teacher for years, uh, is, you know, if, if I wanna do something with current events, uh, again, it happened in the newspaper yesterday, uh, can I not bring the article in the newspaper into the classroom and say, here's what happened yesterday, what do you think? Without having board approval.
Well, we have approved various current event sites that the teachers do access and use. So.
So is it, for example, the Corlin Press, you know, or? Cause I don't know if they're there.
No, we have not approved the Corlin Press.
But that's where a lot of people get their news, so, you know, you understand what I'm suggesting?
I do, I do.
Well, it was stricken though, so this doesn't say that they have to, other than if it's somebody coming into the classroom, um.
Yeah, see, I, I, that's a little different, in my view, that's a little different, if I'm in. If I'm inviting someone from outside the school to come into my classroom and speak on the subject, I better have had some discussion with the principal before that happens.
Correct.
But, uh, you know, when it comes to current events, uh, you know, like the Super Bowl, or whatever, uh, you know, it, to me, a little bit of academic freedom is necessary to be able to, to do justice to that, particularly in the social studies arena, maybe in the science arena too.
I hear exactly, I hear what you're saying. Okay, the Super Bowl isn't necessarily an issue that parents would consider controversial. Maybe persuading, which they'd vote for, but that's kind of light considering the political climate and everything else that our culture seems to be focused on. We're, us, I mean, parents do not want someone else's ideologies pushed on their kiddos. Stick to the curriculum that you have and teach it. It's not that question, questions more aren't gonna come up that are going to prompt critical thinking. Because, yeah, kids need to learn how to think critically. But to have a teacher, and I'm not saying that we have any that are doing it, but that's where the parent's fear is, is that that teacher is standing up there and telling their kids, you know, your parents are wrong, you need to think this way, it's, you know, and so we're trying to put parameters in place so that teachers can teach and parents can parent.
Feel comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I certainly understand and respect that, to the nth degree.
Mm-hmm.
But again, having been in the classroom.
Right.
You know, I, I know that, uh, things will come up, even a student may ask a question about something that he read in the newspaper or a magazine or whatever.
Right.
You say, well, I can't talk about that because it doesn't fit the policy, or, you know, I mean, those are difficult situations for a teacher to sort through, and I think that's part of what we've alluded to here, is teachers are trying to figure out where the, where the gankos are. So we, you know, we need to have certainly direction in that regard, but, but not total tunnel vision, I guess, is what's.
Okay. So what would you like to see?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm just expressing the fact that I, I, I'm seeing a different slam on it, I think, than what, you know, was laid out, so.
Okay. So do you feel that the policy is too, um, controlling on the teacher?
You know, ironically, as I, and I'm, I'm trying to digest this thing, it's, you know, pretty involved, pretty lengthy. Uh, in some respects, I think it is, and in other respects, I think we've done away maybe with some things that, actually established parameters that need to be there.
Okay.
And I, I don't want to, you know, extend the meeting and blow up.
Well, we love it, yeah, we need to have the conversation help.
Yeah.
Because these are the same things we struggle with, that's why we ended up pulling apart all these policies and trying to, you know, uh, silo them. Um, and we did add, um, to one of those policies that had to do with the classroom and, because we can't find any definition or statement of academic freedom at all, no definition of it, there's nothing written or in statute anywhere.
All those nebulous things.
Yeah, so, um, but we did, on one of those other policies, um, it does, Idaho statute does talk about the teachers', uh, right, or what have you, to control the classroom and to, you know, teach within their cla- you know, like their classroom is their domain.
Right.
And that was never in our policies, or the statute was never cited, and we did add that, um.
Which is good, I understand.
Yeah, to a couple of them, because that was never there, because they do need to have that. So are you thinking that we need to put back in the titles of politics, um, values and ethics, the health and sex, all those that were stricken?
Yeah, yeah.
To sort of rein it in a little bit, so it doesn't seem so, so it's not left up to the individual to decide what's controversial?
Yeah, some extent.
Yeah, I'm, I have no.
And I, I appreciate the committee's work, I'm not trying to denigrate that in any way. And I, and I understand it's a very difficult thing, academic freedom is a very nebulous topic, this is what I was starting to try to think about. Uh, so how to put parameters on that that are reasonable, uh, for a classroom teacher and will be acceptable to parents is, is a tough couple, I understand, but.
Which is partly the whole academic freedom in trying to, um, create a, where is it? Oh, it didn't get changed, because it's actually controversial issues and academic protection.
Right.
We took the freedom out of it, because we need to protect, we have no freedom, we need to protect the academic learning, which is where the focus should be on teaching. So that was kind of the, the consensus of the committee was, if you can't, uh, define academic freedom and what's that mean, how do you give people boundaries to live within it?
It's tough.
But academic learning, okay, that's a little bit more easier to define.
A little easier to discern, yeah.
Yes.
You know, and the part on sex education, I think it's probably well-written, you know, the changes with respect to consulting with the principal or appropriate. So I, I'm just struggling a little bit to find the balance here.
Yes, no, that's perfect.
One of the controversial issues that I can think of that comes up every year is in our earth science, eighth grade earth science classrooms, when they're talking about the universe and they have to, they talk about the Big Bang Theory. And our teachers didn't know that they could spend some time talking about the theory of creationism and give equal time to both, um, this policy allows that latitude.
For a balanced branch, which is good.
Yeah. That's the one that's easiest stuff comes to mind, that we deal with it.
So what would you want us to put back in the politics, science, health, and edu- sex education and values and ethics?
I guess I would be more comfortable with that.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm only one vote.
That is correct. As we all are, yep.
Okay.
All right, good.
Do you have any other, on the other policies, though?
No, I definitely don't.
Okay.
Do, um, do you want, do you want time to, uh, think about it a little more, or do you want to just start there? I mean, it's, it's up to you, I, we can always bring it back, maybe it's something we need to change, or we can just throw those back in.
I, I would say, let's go ahead and do what we need to do.
Okay. Okay. So I don't want you to feel like you eat it down.
As I said, now, so I'm just trying to understand the background from the committee's perspective, and how we got to where we're at here.
Well, the background, from my perspective, is just doing everything we possibly can to empower teachers to teach and let parents know we're doing what we can to help protect their kids.
That delicate balance.
It is extremely delicate. But curriculum, huh? We did, oh, no. Okay, so if there's no further discussion, um, if someone wants to make a motion on board policy?
If I can make the motion, um, I would move that we approve, um, the policies, um, twenty-three forty, twenty-three forty-five, uh, and twelve thirty, the duties of the treasurer, um, along with their forms being modified that we spoke about earlier, uh, with the text on the opt-in, opt-out forms, and also with the modifications made to, uh, twenty-three forty, controversial issues and academic protection, changing the title, and also re-establishing items, uh, one through four in the third paragraph of policy twenty-three forty, to include, uh, politics, science, health, and sex education, and values and ethics, so just removing the strikes.
Sure. Having a motion in a second, all favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We have the job description for the treasurer. Since we appointed one, they needed a job description. And fortunately, um, we found one that had been in effect prior to. Imagine that, thanks, Brooke. Um, and so we, uh, sort of morphed what God created, because, uh, Trustee Bain put some input in there from the governmental standpoint, and then we brought kind of back, but, so it's kind of a.
Melting.
Yeah, melting would be good. I was gonna say a mush, that doesn't sound quite as, you know, we mushed them together.
I have two questions.
Yes.
Just for clarification, on number seven, where it says, heed personal custody of any signature stamps and maintain a log for check written.
Yeah.
Um, when you're talking about signature stamps, I just, um, like, for checks, those signatures are actually electronic and not a stamp.
Okay.
Um, I have a signature stamp, but I don't use for anything financial that Rebecca has custody of.
Okay.
Because if I am not in the office and I have a letter that I formulated and I send to her, she can print it and stamp it, and then either scan it and send it, or put it in a mail for me. Um, I just want to make sure that that's not what you're talking about here, because Chelsea would never use my signature stamp.
Okay.
Rebecca does, so.
Okay. What, I guess, the better question would be, are there signature stamps out there that she needs to be made aware of, that she would need to keep possession of? Signature stamps, not including you, I mean, do the assistant treasurers of the high schools have signature stamps? Do, I mean, do we have any knowledge of this?
Are all of the signatures for Jensen, anything financial, those are in the computer system, right, right?
On the SBA side, I think most of it's a wet signature, I think they're same.
A wet, oh, they're actually same. I will verify that we don't have, I, signature stamps, our principals typically have signature stamps, our, um, assistant treasurers do not.
Okay.
I, I think it's, another of those things is a bit adequate, there was a time when we did have signature stamps.
Okay. So it could be something that we strike through.
Eventually went to electronic stamping, but it was a transition period, you know, and.
Because if we, yeah, I'll check. Because if we no longer utilize those, then there would be no need to put that as a duty or responsibility.
Right. Okay, and then my, the other question I have is, um, number eight, pay all district bills, that's, our account's payable for some. And that actually pays all of the bills.
Okay.
Treasurer.
And I believe the red came, oops, from the old policy, correct? Because this was the one that we merged at the meeting.
The red is the one that came from the previous one that Randy, that Trustee Bain, and we, I don't know who worked on it, but.
Okay.
The black language is the other, what we added.
The old language.
But some of them overlapped, so scroll down, scroll, yeah, scroll down, I'll show you.
Okay. The reds.
No, because the control.
All of that was not, all of that language was not in the old one, that was all the one that you found, Ramona.
Yeah, they, um, the strike through, I mean, the, uh, underlined up there, though, um.
That one was from the old part.
Of the one that Trustee Bain worked on.
And then the red is the one that Trustee Bain worked on. But the, beyond that thirteen and on, that was from the older one, we didn't have that much narrative. It was just a, it was bullets of the first eight or nine.
Uh, correct, correct, but the, that nine.
Nine through twelve.
Yeah, was part of what Trustee Bain wrote, because it was underlined.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so let's just grab the other one.
Just to clear.
Sorry, just, I, number eight, um,
Let's see if I can.
That's a duty that actually accounts payable.
I was gonna add for number seven, just thinking about it, building principals do have the, um, their stamp, and they do, they do it for time cards.
Right, I know the principals do.
Right.
But, um, our assistant treasurers don't.
But they have, they, like, they keep it and they stamp those for us, that's, I mean, that's what we did at Betty Kiefer.
Yeah.
It came to me stamped, and then after I approved them, then she would stamp them all, so they actually, I, it wasn't ever in my position, the treasurer had it, had an assistant added, so.
ISBA.
So.
So Chelsea might just need to have a log of the signature stamps that we have in the district, that they're, that they're not going to be under her personal custody, right?
Number eight is, you say, someone else actually does the work.
Right. Yeah, our, our.
But it could be the treasurer's responsibility to direct payment of district bills, if that were appropriate. Even though she may not physically do it, she supervises somebody else who does it.
I asked Chelsea that, and so it's, it's both Chelsea and Brian having those conversations with the net, so I did ask that question.
So, your suggestion is number eight go away?
I'm just asking, um, the, the question simply because Chelsea does not pay the district bills.
Okay.
You, it could say, um, the system providing oversight for the payment of district bills, that would better.
Yeah.
Um, describe what she's actually doing.
Yeah, yeah.
My, here goes, and this is. So this must be the original one from the district. I think part of that came from email that I would send this, yeah, I don't know where, I would have to go back and look at all of them, um, because even some of those that we look at are, um, in this directory, so I don't know where they went.
Did they get them to the school versions?
No, I just opened all those. And they're not, those aren't them. So which one were we looking at again? Uh, eight?
Never mind.
Yeah. Pay all district bills upon authorization of the board. Which is backwards anyway, because the bills are paid before the board brings them, right, so.
Right, and I do remember, actually, now that you say that, I do remember we had a conversation about that, and I think it might have been Trustee Jones who said that, that board has authorized the payment of the bills ahead of the, you're, you're authorizing that person to take care of that part of the job.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure how it's done now, it used to be that we didn't send out any payments until after the board meeting, except emergency payments, there were a few of those, but.
Right. Right.
But I don't know how you do any of that.
But we've, yeah, I've been told it's gone both ways, but then the solidified fact is, is the board gets to the bills after they've already been paid.
Yeah, so it was actually Brooke that sent that one. Yeah, so it was just a merger, um, of all those docs. But I still can't find that one that Trustee Bain worked on.
I think Trustee Bain, Bain added that controlled supervision direct, assistant treasurers, um, prepares monthly. um, prepares monthly financial reports for the school board and keeps a running account of the district's financial standings relative to the annual budget.
Uh, probably, yeah, so some of that was probably, um, uh, so it sounded like she put several of them together, because I just read, like, three of those on the prior, um, treasurer's job description from nineteen ninety-five, I think it was.
Okay.
Um, so, uh... Again, it was all of these different descriptions, and I know that, um, CFO Wallace had worked on one, and the board had worked, they, and it was just a melding of all of those together. So I don't know where, at what point did, was that inserted? We're just trying to take all the documents and come up with one, uh...
Yeah, I just bring that up because currently, number eight doesn't match the practice.
That is correct.
But you added a word or two there, boy.
And, yeah, you said assistant overseeing the payment of all district bills, then that would be an accurate statement.
Is that right?
Assistant overseeing.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I haven't, I just saw this in the board book. I didn't see a lot of the work that they'd done prior. I think that, um, you know, there's other bo, there's other policies that intersect with this that I think, you know, we have the policy of how purchase orders are submitted and those type of things. And, I mean, I think in part they memorize us. We have a purchase order, and that's sort of a contract that we've now done with people, and they perform that service, um, we're gonna be obligated to pay. And I, I suppose we'd go where the board could say, "No, but we'll lose." You know what I mean? I mean, if, if, and we have those things in board policy on the, that process of issuing a PO. So, yeah, I mean, I think that's fine on this, but I mean, thinking of the overall thing...
Yeah.
That there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of internal controls we do just to issue the purchase orders to move forward. So...
Yeah, and you're absolutely right about that. I, I think the, the intent on the statute's standpoint is to ensure that the board has knowledge of...
Correct.
You know, the payments that are going out and the money that's being expended, whatever system you devise, to make sure that that...
Sure.
But the number eight, Brian, right now it says that Chelsea would pay all district bills, but that's what Annette does. So what I'm asking the board is if we can change that to say, um, assist with the oversight of the payment of all district bills. Because she said you and she do that kind of together. She's not actually the one paying the bills.
Right, I mean, yeah, I mean, it is, it's always been a team effort. I mean, Annette doesn't pay anything unless it has an approval from, you know, generally myself or the person that was receiving those goods and know that they received in good faith. You know, we, so, right, so, yeah, that'd be fine.
Can I move approval of this for discussion?
Can I move approval of this? What?
I'd like to move for the approval of the job description that I suggested, the theme that I suggested, and then we can discuss it further if needed.
Okay. Trustee Bain, have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Um, so at this moment, I would call for a five-minute recess, and we will need to stop recording. It is eight fifty-seven, so we'll... Okay, so we're back from our break. It is nine oh four. We're gonna move on to the action item of student clubs. Um, we have one club, which is the Young Life Club that has filled out the application. I do have a question. Are the three that were, or the four that were tabled in yellow, are they coming back?
Everybody knows that, that if they have not yet been approved and would like the board to consider approving them, they have to, they have to fill out the new form and then resubmit.
Okay, okay. Um, so it's for approval of the Young Life Club, which they, we had several, uh, board meetings where people have come in support of the Young Life. It appears that, um, they would be... It's not moving. Um, focused on health education, and that the state standards they would be adhering to would be with regard, with respect to alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, and decision-making. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or conversations they'd like to have regarding Young Living? Or Young Life? Young Life?
I think, I think we had quite enough, uh, quite a bit of input. I think I have a fairly good understanding of what was presented.
It looked like you're thinking there, Bob.
What you did outline was in their application?
Yes, yes.
If they comply with their activities to that, I have no problem.
Okay.
That was my conversation with him.
All right. So with that being said, one or two motion at this time.
Moving to approve the Young Life Club as presented.
Second.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, moving on to the organizational chart, um, quick question. Why is the clerk of the board and the custodian of records linked to the armed district safety specialists? There's a...
It's a very good question. I do not know. We can remove that.
Oh, we do? Sounds good.
Unless Rosanna wants to oversee that program in her sort of...
Yeah, I don't know why that is.
That was the only thing that I'm like, wait a minute. New duties.
I think originally, it had gone all the way from the superintendent down, but then when we built Rosanna's...
Okay.
Hers bigger, it cut off that, so I'll fix it to where it's Lisa connected, unless you don't want it on there at all.
Well, looks like the principals oversee them. Is that accurate?
They, they will do their, their classified evaluation, but I oversee the entire program.
Yes, so originally it had been Lisa.
Lisa leads down here, that.
Oh, got it. Okay.
So, so the link should be from the superintendent, but the clerk of the, got new duties and should give any notice?
Um, I do have a quick question for you. Up to the left of the Board of Trustees, um, it, I'm wondering if that should be broken out into two positions with the treasurer, um, connected to the board?
Mm-hmm.
And then the, is the accounting specialist below the CFO?
That's fine.
Okay. So she'll be on there twice, but...
That's fine. We did that before. Just, yeah, well, and, and to some degree, that's the same, the clerk of the board should be just across from there, but the custodian of records is actually under your supervision.
Oh.
It's not under the board's supervision.
I did not know that. So we can fix those things?
Okay.
Our, our chart's getting...
Yeah, we might have to...
Go to a bigger piece of paper.
But it's very pretty, it's pleasing to the eye.
Okay, thank you.
We'll fix it.
So with consideration for those modifications, I'll entertain a motion regarding the twenty-two, twenty-three organizational chart.
Move to approve of the modifications, we'll discuss.
Sergeant.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, moving on to setting the annual budget hearing date. So we have to set this date. Um... Brian, do you have any input on the date?
I mean, we've traditionally had it on our, um, regular June board meeting. That's how we've done it, you know, previously. Um, there are, you could have a little bit later in June, but there's, you know, some hard deadlines in statute of what you can have it, and so that's, you know, how we've done in the past.
Okay.
So we've done the tenth, ninth, and fifteenth in the previous years of June. What did you have?
And I thought it was really helpful, I'm doing a workshop in advance of that last year.
Yeah, I shared some of those, sort of what we did last year with Lisa. You know, she wanted to do that, but, yeah.
That was helpful, because I...
Yeah.
When we considered the budget, then all of the questions had been answered, and the board was able to give input and actually change some of the things that Brian had in the budget that came to the board. So I would concur that the workshop ahead of the budget hearing was beneficial.
Right. Oh, yes. Before the hea, hearings, always, always good.
Yeah.
It's a busy month, um, they were really close together, so, uh... Twelfth, the June twelfth is, uh, the regular board meeting.
Uh-huh.
And if we did a workshop the week prior?
There's graduations on Tuesday and Wednesday the week prior, but...
Okay, none of those are on the calendar?
Not at all, calendar, yeah.
Not that we can see them in the release? No, they're... They need to be on the calendar.
I'm so sorry. It's okay, make sure they're on the calendar.
And, uh...
Graduation dates on the calendar.
That is beneficial.
So what we do...
What were those dates you said?
Uh, it's the Tuesday and the Wednesday.
The sixth and the seventh?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, we need those on calendar, because we need to move, uh, agenda planning, the policy committee also for June.
Okay.
What, what's your comfort level on to do a workshop in advance of June twelfth? I know you're always under pressure at that point, so...
Well, we have to advertise...
Now, what about this right here?
Two weeks in advance, that the budget's ready. So if it's June twelfth, I'm advertising it be in the May, roughly.
So maybe we're almost the third week of May for a workshop?
Possibly.
That would be the twenty-third or twenty...
Yeah, I mean, I can't do it too much earlier, honestly. I mean, depending, you could have a lot of information.
That's right, so you're, I know you're under a lot of pressure at that point.
Yeah, there's just not a lot of time, and the legislature doesn't get down till April, which is not a lot of time.
Um, what is the status with the budget committee?
We tried to get a meeting before the holidays, and nobody could make it. Um, and, and then when our payroll specialist resigned in January, I had to take home payroll duties, and I just haven't had time to schedule it.
Yeah. Do you have a projection for when you might possibly do it now?
Yeah, I, you know, I can put something out and get some feelers and see if we can find another time to meet here in the next couple of weeks, and can start that process.
Well, the concern is, is I don't want it to have the same, um, effect that it did last year, where it was just the budget committee, it was an educational committee, you just told them what you did, and there was no input. Um, because that's the purpose of the committee, is to have an input and to do part of the work with you. Is that gonna be able to happen this year?
I'm not sure how committee of, community members are gonna help me build the budget. Now, we can have input on priorities, but use of that then comes to the board to sort of define what we're doing.
Right.
So do you want this, how would you see this budget committee giving me direction as how to build a budget?
Well, I know that Trustee Bain is very, um, invested in being part of the committee and being part of the process. There was no process that the committee was included in last year. And, um, it was basically just an educational forum where you told everybody what you did, and that was the extent of it. So I know last year, after that whole, um, process happened, Trustee Bain and I spoke with you about it, and you had assured us that this year would be different, you just didn't have enough time last year, et cetera. So I'm trying to be assured that it's not gonna be the same format that it was last year, which is strictly educational.
I asked for the board specifically on the parameters and the guidelines of what they want the committee. I've had, honestly, zero feedback.
Okay.
So...
So then what you're telling me is it's just gonna be the same as it was?
No, what I'm telling you is that I had scheduled that meeting and tried to before the holiday break. Every committee member that was there from the community, except for one, said they couldn't make it. So at that point, we didn't schedule it before Christmas.
Right.
During the holiday break, my payroll specialist left.
I understand that, and I understand that you were busy in the month of January.
And I'm, yes, and Trustee Thompson, I'll be doing double duty right now with payroll as we're training the new person. I just finished doing the payables and paying our medical bills today. So, um, there's a lot there, and yes, I can schedule that and move forward with the committee.
Okay.
But, so when the committee comes together, typically, and I guess this is maybe what Brian's trying to ask, um, typically when you build a budget, because eighty-seven percent of our budgets are people, that part just kind of rolls over, right?
Right, right.
Um, so I think what, so, um, when, then you've got the thirteen percent for the utilities and some of those things. Are you wanting the committee to, like, I know one of the things that you guys have talked about that we've got, that you asked Brian about, is finding a way to build the line item into the budget for curriculum. Are those some of the conversations that you're looking for? I think that's what he's trying to figure out, is what, because so much of the budget there isn't, he doesn't even have anything he's thinking about, because it's an automatic rollover, because it's staffing.
Right, and that is absolutely understandable. Um, it's my understanding that the premise of the committee is to participate. No one participated in anything last year, but a few people came out with a better understanding of how the budget is created, not that they had any contributing factors to the budget. So, um, with that being said, with Trustee Bain, I know that she is, um, passionate about being involved in the entire process and to be, um, just kept in the loop. So, because she's not here tonight, and she's sick...
Right.
I'd say, I'd feel much better with her weighing in on it, as far as what she would really like to see happen within the committee, because I think she has a better perspective than I do, so... I mean, I know what I'd like to see happen, but I'm not in there, because she is, so... Did you figure out what they did?
Yeah, you know, having been in the somewhat that position as superintendent, although I always had a business manager as well.
Right.
But I had a lot of, a lot of hands-on when it came, came to budgeting in my tenure. And what Lisa described is correct, I mean, you know, when your eighty-five, eighty-seven percent of your budget goes for salaries and insurance benefits.
Mm-hmm.
And the rest of it is kind of like, you know, we want to ensure, for example, that curriculum is appropriately provided for.
Correct.
Uh, we want to ensure that we're gonna make the use of some asset funds in a way that will allow us to rule... We want to ensure that we're gonna make the use of some SIR funds in a way that will allow us to roll some general fund money.
And different.
Into a savings account for the future.
Right.
And some of those kinds of things. You know, and those kind of discussions I think could go on with.
With the budget.
With the budget committee.
I agree.
Just to give those general directions so that Brian has a good feel for, you know, what to prioritize and so on and so forth. But when it comes down to putting numbers on the line.
Correct.
You know, it's, it's a pretty cut and drag procedure.
Right, and I absolutely respect that, but to ask people from the community to come join a committee and to not have anything other than to just listen and be told how it's done and then we're done when that's not really the foundation of a committee is a little challenging, so.
Well, in all honesty, without that education taking place, they wouldn't know where to start.
But the thing is, is it was just educational. There was no starting on anything, it was just an educational forum, which is fine because I do believe everybody needs to have better understanding of how the district operates, how the money is received, how it's acquired. They need an education on all of it, I heartily agree with that.
And I think the plus of that is, you know, they can go out into the community and say, you know, I was there.
Right, exactly.
You know, when some of these things were brought forward and discussed.
Yeah.
And it was, you know, given direction as to which way to go with.
Right.
And that's a positive for them and for the community as a whole, I think.
Yeah.
But I've kind of dedicated myself to try to help participate in the budget committee this year. Brian's been good enough to send out his emails, so.
Good, good.
Try to be there with Randy.
Yay. That's exciting. Then I'll派you on.
Not that I know anything.
So what do you call it?
Um, so basically, the last week of May, the first day of June,
would be too soon if we were gonna make any changes because Brian would have to publish before then.
Yeah, so for, for a, I think, if I understood you correctly, what we're talking about, for a workshop type of thing, that'd be like maybe the third week of May somewhere in that timeline.
Yeah, that's what I just said, yeah, that's the only, well, if you look at what's on the calendar right now with graduations and not pushing it so close, but then to Brian's point, when the legislators are done, you know, then, so yeah, that's about the only thing you could do. And then you have the Memorial Weekend, so you have to account for that Friday and Monday, that's trash. You can't do anything there, nobody's gonna show up.
So what if we did it the 22nd, which is a Monday?
Yeah.
And that's the, actually, the fourth Monday of May because there's five Mondays. Do you think you could do a workshop by the 22nd of May?
By the what date?
22nd.
Sure.
Okay. Oh, yeah, check the calendars, yeah.
I'm just looking at mine, but I have to move around, it's not a big deal.
No.
I have a parent advisory, but I can move that in.
Okay.
No, we don't.
Great. Which would then allow us, or should allow us then to hold the budget hearing on our June meeting?
Yes. So are you, would Tuesday, the 23rd be better and you wouldn't have to just move anything on your calendar?
No, I think Mondays work for the board and that's, I know, far enough in advance that I can move that, it's not a big deal.
So we can do Monday, May 22nd?
Yep.
So that's the third or fourth Monday?
That's the fourth, okay. For the budget.
It's not, it's not.
Third Monday I have a different meeting.
It's not the German Chamber. It's not the German.
And what time are we gonna do that, 6:00, 7:00?
Let's do 6:00 p.m.
6:00?
But it'll, it's the week before then.
Oh, what's wrong?
The Ratcham Chamber. Not on May 22nd. I don't have it on my calendar.
So I put it on the 15th, just to make sure.
May 15th.
Okay, then, May 22nd, 2023, 6:00 p.m., here at the district office for the budget workshop.
And then for the budget hearing would be?
Would be June 12th at our regular board meeting.
Okay. So we don't have to hold something separate.
But we should be fine.
That's been traditionally what we've done, yeah.
Okay. But I also feel sometimes that because our agendas get so long, everything gets crammed and so there's always the option to bump that out to its own thing so that people can actually participate in the hearing.
So is our action item here to set the date for the annual budget hearing?
We would want to do that because we need to notify the counties in April.
Right. So I would move that it be set for June 12th.
Okay. So we have a motion.
You also have a motion?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
I have a question. So are we gonna, for the time for that budget hearing, are we gonna leave that at the same as our, as our hearing or do we, or our meeting, or do we want to start it?
Let's start it at 5:00.
At 5:00?
Yeah, let's do the budget hearing at 5:00 so we can start our meeting at 6:00. Because then we designate an hour to the budget hearing.
And we take a half hour break in between?
Five minutes. Five minutes.
He's a taskmaster.
Well, if the hearing ends early, sure. All right. Moving on to the LJSD operational plan, we need to update it every six months.
Yeah, I got no feedback.
I saw that.
Zero. Yeah, well, I take that back, I got one email from a parent who is no longer living in our district.
Oh.
So he asked if I would please remove her from the agreement.
Oh, well, there's so.
But the way that I, that I sent the email out was it's, it's our six month check-in. You know, right now, we're operating as we did prior to COVID. If there are any, here's the plan, if there's anything that you want us to modify, please reply all and let us know. If you want to meet in person, please let me know, and I got the crickets. So in my small mind, I just assumed that that meant that everybody's happy with the green means go and we can change it.
Yeah, status quo.
Does this require, reporting requirement expire or something?
At the end of the, is it 2024?
24?
That we have to have it, whenever the SIR dollars have to be fully spent, then the requirement goes away.
What if the emergency went away though? Pandemic's over in May?
Yeah, no, it's, it's tied to the dollars.
Yeah.
So I just think we'll just continue with what we've got until we're done. We just have to send the updated version to the board or the state every six months.
Okay.
Ready.
I just need you to approve that or vote on it at least, please. Ready to go.
So is this an action item?
Yes, it is.
So we'll move to approve the LJSD operational plan as submitted.
Second.
Having a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We've already addressed item 58, moving to item 9, which is to approve or deny the modifying of the 23, 24 calendar. So this came up because of the complaints we received over the placement of Christmas break this year. Kind of caught some parents off guard. We requested a survey which was done. Seems like the staff's in favor of it, the parents are not. So with.
So if I may just toss out a possible scenario. We moved to this later break, break two years earlier than we would typically have. So next year, we would not typically be in this, at this later point. One of the things that was suggested to me was perhaps modifying the vacation so that Friday, the 22nd, is the actual first day of Christmas vacation with Thursday, the 21st, be the final day, gives us a little bit more time before Christmas.
Okay.
The following year, December of 2024, then we're on track for our normal later version of the break because of when Christmas and New Year's fall.
Right.
So the, and 2024 is a lead year, so Friday, the 20th, would be our last day of school. So it's, if Thursday, the 21st, was our last day, we'd be very close to what is coming. Either way, whether we go with the later in that scenario or the earlier, it's an 11 day break because if we go earlier, Monday, January, January 1st is Monday, we would come back to school on Tuesday, so it would be 11 days, so it's the same number of days either way. But we did get a little bit of feedback from some people who have already purchased airfare or things for, for Christmas based on what was posted, so it's just another option, I guess, for us to consider.
Okay.
Because when, when the results came in, I told Board Chair Thompson that the board has a challenging decision to make because we are split. I would tell you from the staff's perspective, and it's not all about the staff, but the later break gives them the opportunity to rush through the holidays like everybody else but have a little bit of time at the end to breathe, and they all felt like when they came back, they were rejuvenated and ready to hit the ground running. Where when they come back on January 2nd, there is none of that because they're doing what everybody else is doing, preparing for the holidays and doing the entertaining, and then they come right back to work, so. Does it have a couple thoughts to ponder? This isn't a crazy decision?
No, and looking at the number of responses we had from parents, I mean, parents did participate. So.
We don't have to finalize the calendar right now, Brooke sends those down by May 31st.
Okay.
I could send out another survey and ask the parents if, if I changed that date so that the last date was December 21st. If that was enough time, just to give you more information, if there would be some who would be willing to be. Or you can raise your decision.
Yeah.
Any conversation?
Discussion.
Do you have any leeway at the beginning or the end of the school year to change a day or so long direction or anything? Because if you, if you let out, what do you, second is it?
Yeah, we're gonna have to make up a student day. It's not just a teacher day, that's a student day.
Right.
Yeah.
And what, when would you do that at the end of the year?
Um, no, well, we could do it at the end of the year. We have the, there's a non-contract day in May around state, all the state tournaments that are down south. And we started doing that just because we had so many teachers and staff who were traveling south, either as coaches or parents. So we, we put that in as a non-contract day, we could make that a student day. We could add a day to the end of June.
Three minutes, so if we alter this, you said it's still 11 days?
Only if, well, either way, either way, we have to add a day back into the calendar because we need to ensure that we have 190 teacher contract days in the calendar and we have to make sure that we have enough instructional hours for our students in the calendar. And so by either one of, if we, well, if we stay.
Even if there's no snow days?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because the snow days are.
Those are emergency closures.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we didn't put any time in for that day, we wouldn't have snow days, I guess, would be.
Okay.
Or at least at high school level, I mean, we would really be kind of cutting ourselves short, sorry. So if we go to the earlier, which is what the parents prefer, we'd have to add a day in. If we stayed with what's on the calendar, we would be fine, we wouldn't have to add any days. If we took Friday, the 21st, as the first day and added a day on that into the vacation and did still did the later, you're adding a day in somewhere, we can, we can take care of the adding the day on either end of that, whichever one we do. That would be, and so Brooke and I will work on that and then we'll bring the calendar back to the board for approval again with the edits based on what you guys just said tonight around this. But we also have, we'll modify the calendar and take one of the October curriculum days out because the staff feels really strongly that it's too much information all at once for them and they would prefer to have one day of professional development and keep the kids in school the other day. So we need to make that modification to the calendar. And then if we go to the trimester for elementary, that would change just where report cards and things were.
Okay.
That will, that part will, just so it's in the back of your mind, cause us to have, our elementary teachers would only have two end of quarter in their trimester days, where the secondary would have three end of quarter days and they're not going to the line. So that part of, that's, that will be information we need to get out to the parents. So I just need you to have that in the back of your mind. Instructionally, it's the right thing to do for the elementary kids, but it does.
But it will cause some consternation for parents.
They just have to make sure they have childcare for those two days. And if we can make one of the trimesters match the end of quarter for the secondary, we'd have to look at the calendar, but then we're talking more. So anyway, the calendar has to come back, so all of those pieces will be.
Okay.
Included when we bring it back. Included this.
So we're not ultimately making a decision tonight?
Well, it's up, it's up for action. We could make a decision tonight, or it can be, it would need to be tabled if we're not going to make a decision tonight. Which is, oh, there we are, okay.
There would then be some direction for having one.
Or there would be, one of the two, yeah.
I'm just checking.
So shall we have discussion? Do we want to table until we see what the other potential changes would be? Do we want another survey? Do we, I mean.
And I don't feel like we need another survey necessarily.
Me neither. My struggle is I definitely want to support the staff, but we had an overwhelmingly large number of parents respond. So I'd like to find a compromise somewhere.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, I did provide for you the, the emails that I received, the documentation. And I just copied and pasted, and so you saw exactly what I saw. In addition to those, I guess, did you guys get different than what I had or did you get the same? Because while there were several, I think maybe eight were, that I got, were please reconsider and two were please don't change. Which in that school district of 4,800 is actually a huge number. But they definitely, I mean, we haven't had that many people reach out about something.
Right.
So I, that part I get, but.
Yeah, I didn't get anything that said please do not change, I know that. I, and I think more was, we did receive, I did receive emails, you know, not happy with it, but I think it was more of a community conversation kind of thing with, from, from my perspective. But I think it was more of a community conversation kind of thing with, um, from, from my perspective anyways. And the people that I talked to, it was more of a, you know, why didn't you guys do that?
Yeah, we definitely went two years earlier than what we, we had planned.
Right, and I don't want to disrupt the people that have already made plans dependent on the calendar that was provided.
Right.
But I also hear the parents' concerns. I mean, eight hundred, that's, that's a large amount of parents.
Not that we have to be consistent, but if we were to make the, the change to a much earlier release date, um, would that put us out of staff worth and members?
Well, I, Coeur d'Alene, or, yeah, Coeur d'Alene School Board is, is making a decision also tonight, it's on their support agenda. But they, they are considering that Friday, the twenty second is the first day of Christmas vacation starting. And having Thursday, the thir- the twenty first is the last day. But we'll, I would know tomorrow, I guess, what they're going to do.
It makes a difference to a few families, particularly those who work here but have children there, I suppose.
Yeah, and there are a lot of those. And that's, I, and that was one of the things our, our teachers did ask me to share with the board is that our teachers don't get to pick and choose when they take vacation, um, because we are so tied to the school calendar. When the kids are in school, teachers are in school. So if Coeur d'Alene, Spals and Lakewood are not the same, um, they may not get to spend much of their Christmas vacation with their kids. So maybe they asked me to share that.
I would love we make the change to one day earlier.
I can see how it is. Is it the one on our website right now?
Mm-hmm. You should be able to see the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for. I see the twenty-two, twenty-three.
I know the twenty-three, twenty-four is there, I just don't remember where I found it. If you go up to the search bar and you type in.
Yeah, Roseanne just found it. If you click that.
Where is it at, Roseanne?
Um, if you click this one here on the side, both of them will come up.
Oh, okay. That's where it was.
The other thing, um, the teachers mentioned was that, um.
That's still the twenty-three, twenty, oh, that's right. No, that's the twenty-three, twenty-four.
That's twenty-three, twenty-four.
That's next year.
Yes, that's what we're looking at, we already did the twenty-three.
That's right. What can you do, twenty-three?
But one of the things, one of the things the teachers mentioned was that, um, this is the first time really in December or, uh, that we have four full weeks of instruction between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
When you say twenty-five.
Yeah. Which they appreciated.
Oh, so that's basically what it is, it's the Christmas day to, um, the eighth. I use the blue box.
The first day back to school.
Okay. I'm going to scroll through some, so. There's Christmas. But the twenty-second would literally be the Friday before Christmas, Christmas is on a Monday. So you're basically being the same predicament we had this year, um.
Yeah, except this year they got out on the twenty-third. So they had literally their first day of school was Christmas.
Fifteen, fifteen, hold, ten days before. All right, back to the second.
So we do have a motion on the floor.
What was the motion?
Um, for Bob to, um, move to release on the twenty-first, the Thursday, as opposed to Friday, the twenty-second.
I'm not sure what the solution is, um. Especially because it just amuse, manage that around on the calendar, um. So staff is staying the twenty-second in there, so they're literally a week apart. And the parents are staying this calendar. Fifteen days back here, fifteen days here, and that sort of splits the difference.
What are you talking about?
Um, if you did, uh, I know it's a midweek thing, but if you did, um, Wednesday, the twentieth, that sort of cuts. I don't know when the comeback day would be then, um, that cuts the difference of, um, between the staff and the parents. And that's sort of odd day, but, um.
Right, you only have two student days somewhere that, if you do that, you have two student days somewhere.
Unless, well, I think she's saying we came, we come back on the Wednesday. Instead of the third. So instead of the third.
Yeah, the third and the fourth would be, the fourth would be another, the same amount of days, yeah.
If we came back on the fourth, you'd have no kids.
How are you attending?
Even the third, our attendance that week is gonna be low, but.
I was trying to split the difference between the, you know, the staff and parents, um.
Was it one of the problems, aligning with K-Tech, you, compared to.
Coeur d'Alene, yeah.
Coeur d'Alene, so should we wait till they probably decide?
Well, that's how it got him this year.
I know.
Was aligning with them.
But if we choose to adjust by one day, then that's not a huge alignment issue with them. If we choose to bump into the fifteenth, it's a week, it's a week that could be disshoveling for families. And staff.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, staff could, not families, staff, yeah, a little tired. As we all are.
Well, I guess we can keep the information table, we don't have to have a definitive decision until the thirty-first, right?
Of May, that's when the calendars are due?
No.
Sorry.
I don't, I don't think we even need that long, but I think after we. Get back the calendar and see what, you know, where we're gonna push the days.
Would it help you guys to have like a visual of maybe like three different options? Like if, I wonder what the overall calendar would look like if we had it with eleven days?
Yes, yes, like, cause that's what I'm trying to bounce back and forth between all of them to figure out.
Okay. Or can I work on that and we'll bring that to the merge?
Because I, I appreciate all the parents that gave the input and all that, but, um, the fifteenth does seem a little. That's the only, I think we need to come closer, like that week of the eighteenth, somewhere in there, I think is a good compromise.
It's usually the eighteen, the twentieth is usually when a party starts, I guess, this time, but depends on where it falls.
Yeah. Yeah. Right.
So we currently have a motion on the floor about the tables or whatever we're saying now.
Let it die.
Let it die? There is no second.
There's no second.
So the motion has died. So now to the, the motion to table the calendar?
Yes, I will table the calendar, um, until we have the, uh, the examples.
Okay.
Where do they, where do the calendar align?
Is that good?
All right. Your ventriloquism.
Great.
We have a motion in the second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, hearing how the motion carries. Uh, we can skip the big detectors, we can move to the spring athletic schedules. Are there any questions, comments or concerns on any of the schedules presented?
I'm gonna tell you, we're missing Timberlake High School golf schedule, um, Katie was struggling to, Katie was struggling to get teams lined up.
Okay.
So, uh, that will come to merge.
Okay. That's fine.
Move approval on the spring athletic schedules. Second.
Motion in the second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing how the motion carries. Moving on to the, uh, twenty twenty-three prom dates and locations for the high schools.
I need to tell you that, um, Timberlake High School is actually considering a different venue. They are going to, um, look at, uh, Templin's or Red Lion? Templin's?
Red Lion or Red Lion.
Red Lion. Um, historically, they both have been at the Coeur d'Alene Resort Event Center, but it's very expensive.
Great.
Um, so they're trying to find lower cost options.
That was a question that I had when I saw the, uh, the videos.
Fairgrounds.
Yeah, how much is it costing to go outside?
Uh, I don't know what the cost is, I can find that out for you.
Well, the, does the district pay for that or does the city?
Well, I.
That's the second question.
Yeah, okay. They raise money.
Okay.
And so it comes from the, um, ASV.
Okay, so they, they pay for their prom, okay.
Still likes Marla, don't you?
So then you do this. But I can tell you that the fairground is not going to be the thousands of dollars that the resort was.
That's why they went there last year, because they discovered how cheap or less expensive that it was.
The number five, the number nine.
With gym free? Yeah, the gyms are free.
Except that it's too expensive.
They have a, still. I don't know if they do.
That was their graduation parties.
Oh.
Well, they only have the fairgrounds, they're crazy about.
There's a nice, there's a nice little hatchery that's out. Yeah, there's one that they use for weddings and things.
Sure they have a.
No. They have a building that they use for weddings out there. I'll find out the story.
Okay, why? Moving on to approve these, uh, prom dates for, uh, Timberlake, Mountain View and.
So you have.
Have a motion in the second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Both stay.
Three in favor, one in stay.
Kudos to Mountain View.
Moving on to the Red Cross shelters request to use our buildings in case of emergency.
So I don't know if we've had an MOU replaced, but definitely I've had some sort of verbal agreement with the Red Cross because when, um, Apple or Faragut.
Right.
Is that Cape?
Cape Horn?
Horn. Or Cape Horn was on fire and people were evacuated, um, they used Timberlake High School.
Okay.
Um, as a shelter for those folks.
Yeah.
And they, they reached out, um, and asked if they could continue to do so and so. Um, I told them, and I needed to write it to board.
Okay.
So.
They didn't even know we.
We're good neighbors.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great thing to do, I just, word was never told.
Yeah, uh, so I don't know if we, I, when I reach back out, depending on what your vote is tonight, I will, if, if it's approved, I will ask if they have a standard interview that they use with agencies or facilities. Um, if not, then we'll have to work on.
Well, and my only, uh, question or cause of concern is definitely want to open up our buildings, but then where's the liability fall and what if something gets destroyed while they're utilizing it? Is that on us or is it on them? How to, how, you know?
I just want to protect us.
There needs to be some brand, I just like.
I like.
Okay.
Well, yeah, the other issue is, you know, both the catastrophe that occurs while schools in session and they had, they could, you know, balance that.
Right. Right.
Yeah, it helped that it was on fire or something. We didn't have kids in the building, there we go.
Don't burn during school sessions. Okay. So, um. Do we want a motion?
Yeah.
Or table it till we have an MOU?
I think your campaign's.
I think we can table it till next year.
I, I heard he mumbled something about a table.
Yeah, I did.
And then did he grunt?
I think so.
So I think we have a motion in a second. All favors say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing how the motion carries. Oh, now we have to go on to the bin for painting. Okay, I don't like the bin, just can throw that out there. At all.
Come on, honey.
It's an astronomical amount of money. Um, did we ever talk, and maybe it's a type of project or whatever, but did we talk to K-Tech about painting?
No, we did not talk to K-Tech about painting.
Okay. Why? Just scary, guys.
I don't think they have a paint class.
I don't know.
Yeah, construction. Yeah, it could come in a car.
I don't know that they have all of the equipment that would be required, like the scaffolding and.
But they're pretty creative out there.
I mean, even if we.
I can ask the question.
Had to rent the equipment to use, but then, of course, there's the liability fees. But, um, yeah, that's just astronomical. I can't, I mean, I'd, I'd rather.
It took me about a half hour to recover from that.
That's.
I saw that.
Yeah, that's huge.
And, you know, I don't know.
Don't feel bad, Brian, I'm not, I'm not.
No, I thought it was I who saw it, but that's, that's the only person who would bid.
Yeah. I can do it for half that.
I bet you can, Dave.
I'll help you, Dave.
Help you.
I won't cut in.
I'll carry you later.
Okay.
Wow.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's a lovely number.
Wow.
Yeah.
It'll take me a year, but. Do it.
The, just so you know, the removal of the bleachers from the messing at Lakeland High School and the moving them to Lakeland Middle School is on hold until this part is figured out because we all have to move that set of bleachers more than once.
Right.
If we're gonna paint, we want to pull all the bleachers out, paint, and then put the new ones in.
Is, is, is it anticipated this would happen in the summer or sooner than that?
No, it'd have to be summer.
There were a couple of questions I did have while I'm here, forward questions. Why is, there's some money in there protesting. Did you have any conversation with them about the necessity for that?
No, Mike had that, you know, it's, um, couldn't get anybody out with that scope, so. At this level of a project, once you get above fifty thousand, you're supposed to get three informal quotes.
Right.
You know, at least try.
Yeah.
And so we, we did that and people weren't responding. Um, you know, we've, we've done a lot of work with Burks before, but they're high. So I would, if, if it's a critical thing, we wanna paint this summer, we can certainly move forward. I, I think that, uh, given, even again, our new, uh, relationship with Amric, and I think that some of the craziness and the trades is gonna be slowing down here a little bit. That if we delay it a little bit, I, I don't think it would hurt anybody's feelings, but if, if it's super important to happen in the summer, then we can forward.
Nobody wants that painted any worse than I do, I can assure you, but I couldn't, I couldn't quite handle that bit. One of the, the other issue that I noticed in there is they're, they're calling for two or three coats of paint. You're giving and you're wanting that, so it's proposed.
Yeah, probably just cause some of it's just so old and they just think it's gonna soak in and they wanna make sure it lasts and that they're gonna warranty it and things like that. But, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, this was not a, a little bit, same thing when I saw it, you know, it was, it was high. So.
Well, that's what I call greedy business.
And a lot of contractors have been doing that, right?
Yeah.
You know, they say, I don't really need the work, but I'm sure I'll do it for X.
I'll put him off and come and do yours.
Right, so, um, I mean, we, and they do call it a work, they're a good company, but I think that it's high.
If you were to redo the, the bid process, how long would that take?
Um, you know, it takes, again, just reaching out. We can do it informally. We don't have to advertise and things like that, cause it's not. That's where, two hundred thousand or above is when the law requires you to do a formal bid. So we could certainly start reaching out to some of the other contractors again, saying, hey, we need, look at this scope of work. Can you guys get a surprise? And maybe we can get somebody to come in and, I mean, we have this one and get a couple of other bids.
So do we even publish these or it's just a list that people would contact and say, hey, we have this?
Yeah, we're, we're reaching out and con, to the local people who would prefer sort of an informal process. But Mike, I mean, he reached out to all the, you know, even T V Clark, Gino, uh, some of the painting guys, um, contractors that would do commercial work and it was, they weren't responding.
I noticed that this was dated November first. I know from past experience, a lot of contractors might have their work this time of year.
Right.
Most of that, so that's why I'm wondering whether maybe we shouldn't go back through the process, say, as of first of March, and see if we can get something better.
Yeah, we can certainly try.
That's my suggestion.
Would the, uh, the general contractors who are helping with the building projects have ideas of maybe dangers that we haven't tapped into before?
Yeah, they may have some different subs they've worked with. I mean, I'm sure on their projects, they're not the main painter.
Well, they're gonna have painters doing the outsides of these buildings this summer.
Possibly. Some of the materials they're looking at can come pre-painted, actually.
Well, that would be an option.
Yeah, too, on some, but yeah, but, yeah, they could maybe tie into it possibly. Yeah, I'm gonna ask them who their, their subs are, or they plan, or go from there.
At least reach out to them.
Sure.
That's a, that's a good idea, yeah. I would love if we rejected the bid and threw out for another set of proposals.
And a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion in a second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hey.
Hey.
Hey, question, question, so everybody can bid on it. And if you, if your pool's only this big, you're re-asking the same people. If it's not out there for other people to see it, they don't know that, that work is there. I mean, just this, you've got, um, fifty thousand square feet just right here in this first portion of the bid. And then if you scroll back through, getting this, that was my idea. Then you're just, the pool's too small, you know? Sure, there's probably an area, maybe not, I don't know. I mean, there isn't anybody that wants to tackle that, you know? Or that are qualified, you know, and I don't know what our, um, qualifications are to do it other than public works license or.
Do you have to have a public works license?
Yeah, they have to have a public works license.
No.
You know, if you, if you. Uh, you know, the general rules are, we could certainly do a formal bid.
No.
You don't have to, I guess, it's kind of thresholds there.
Right, right.
But, you know, generally, they do have to have a public works license or that's what we're gonna work with. The specifications, like when, we didn't, we didn't formally write specifications for it. We had just asked them to come out, walk with Mike and they, that's when they measured and did the formal bid. I mean, so they, I mean, they scoped and did a thorough job of, of that. If we did it informal, again, we try to get people to do that. Um, if we go to a formal bid, then we really do need to sort of write up specs and have that and seal bid. But then if they're the most responsive bidder, then we are sort of obligated to take that contractor.
Yeah. Well, we'll just ask the people, whatever you guys were thinking, you were just talking about.
Yeah, and we can definitely talk with, uh, other, you know, our neighboring school districts and some of the other, you know, bigger companies and stuff like that, saying, you know, who's been doing a lot of that type of work for you, try to get more to, to respond.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have three in favor and one in motion carries. Moving on to discussion items. Um, we have the four-day school week.
So just an update, Michelle had kind of asked for some information, so, um, Brooke found that document that I provided for you as far as how many districts in the state are moving to the four-day school week. And you can see that over the course of the years, that number is going up. Um, there's a strong likelihood that Post Falls will go to a four-day school week next year. Um, I am concerned about doing anything with this right now, um, because we're, we're working our tails off to build, um, trust and, and a sense of community with our, within our community, uh, for, for the levees that we're running. Um, it seems a little bit disingenuous to, to go out and ask them to support us and that, and then come back and let them know that thank you for your support and we're gonna now only have four days of school next year. Um, my recommendation would be, it's to, um, after talking to Dean and Akara from Post Falls, my recommendation to the board would be that we maintain, uh, what we do and how we do it and let them have a year to work out the kinks and figure out what's going to work and change your mind. Um, because they do have a lot of, uh, um, I think eighty percent of their teachers are in favor, and then I think seventy percent of the parents. But they're gonna have to figure out childcare, how do you meet the instructional minutes and provide, and then what does that look like for student achievement? I just would rather us, the district, our district's always been a district that we don't just jump on the bandwagons simply because somebody else is doing it. We, there's, there's, there's gotta be a strong reason that it's good for kids that we do that. Um, the reality is, we may lose a couple of teachers to Post Falls, but Post Falls doesn't have hundreds of openings every year, so, um, would be drastic, you know, but, but, um, I just. I guess, I don't know how to do it and make it feel good to the community right now. That's my recommendation.
Well, part of the reality is this brought up as an waste to tighten, tightening our belts because of what it would save us on our budget, which would be, I think, if I mentioned, it would be over a million.
No, most districts don't find, uh, very big savings because if we cut, let's say we don't go to school on Friday, um, we still have all of the teacher salaries and benefits, none of that changes.
Right.
And really, you don't, you, you've got to find a way to maintain classified salaries, benef, salary benefits, or we're gonna lose a lot because we're already struggling to keep up the, how much they can make elsewhere. So you could save some money on electricity on Friday if nobody was working in the building and, um, uh, but you would, um, we would have to provide, somehow provide childcare for families who can't. I don't know how to do that. I don't know how to tell parents that we're only gonna teach a kid four days a week and then you've gotta figure out how to take care of them on Fridays. That, so every other district has provided something for them on that day off. Um, so in Court Lane or in, uh, Post Falls, the, um, Boys and Girls Club or, the Boys and Girls Club, but they have one of those nonprofit groups. They're going to actually provide, um, activities for the kids. Up in Monterey, they do the same thing, so they have outside agencies that come in. We don't have those in our community to draw from. Um, so you, you, we, we, we'd have to figure that piece out.
Right.
The, I don't know how you provide enough hours for the bus drivers for them to maintain their, what they're currently making. So, uh, um, Brian could probably speak to it better, but I don't think there's a significant cost savings to the district when you're talking about going to a four-day.
I'd heard that maybe it was the Post Falls that, that it would be like one or twenty something million cost savings to their budget because of what they're faced with, with not having levy passes, not having the levy pass, so.
Court, and maybe it was Court Lane they were talking to. I know Court Lane has said if their levees don't pass, they'll have to go to the four-day work week because they're gonna have to cut twenty million dollars out of their budget. And there, it's Court Lane, so they're, but, um, I don't know, am I just speaking, Brian?
No, I mean, you can have cost savings. It just depends on what you wanna do. You know, truly, the cost savings would be from not having class light staff on those Fridays, not running your bus routes, not having food service. That's where the savings are. Closing the buildings down, we don't need to have custodians in there. You know, those type of things, cause since most of our costs, salaries and benefits, that's where your savings are gonna be. If you have your buildings open on Friday for athletics and things like that, you're not saving anything. You're still heating your building, you know, or cooling it, if the case may be. You still have, you're gonna have people there cleaning it and there, and you do have the challenges for staffing, so. Most, I think most districts have gone to a four-day week, haven't realized significant savings except in maybe some of those areas. I think it has become a, for sure, uh, for certified staff, a, a recruiting, uh, and retaining of certified staff, cause there are certain years of teachers who, they're on a four-day work week, even if it was a little bit longer day. That's an incentive for them to be at that district as opposed to maybe another. I think that's where Post Falls is looking for.
Right.
Trying to retain staff.
And Post Falls is going to, um, maintain salaries for all people, um, classified included, so they won't, they won't see any savings on the salary benefits. They, they, the intent is to recruit and retain, so they wanna maintain the salaries they have and have them reduced to the number of days it's working.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely.
It's not about cost savings.
It, right, and it could be depend on certain staffing, you know, they have, your bus drivers have left to from, but maybe they're picking up more trips now because they have the time to do trips, you know, within their five-day schedule, so. You know, there could be some where you can maybe keep like drivers whole because we're not chartering as much, cause we're, now we're doing the trips. So, I mean, there's some of those things, um, but, you know, paras, but.
Yeah, one of, one of the things, um, that I would, I guess I would look at the board now, um, that, uh, when I took the job as the assistant superintendent, one of the things, as a building principal, when I was a day keeper, I heard from our staff, uh, going through, um, the recession and when we froze salaries, was that, um, they felt like we really balanced the budget on the backs of the classified staff. And we worked really hard for them to feel like they're a valuable part of the staff and that they matter and we can, we literally cannot do what we do without them. Um, so if, if that's the only part of the bill, of the organization that feels the pain from moving to four-day week, we'd take you backwards with regard to classified staff.
The interesting part of that, I think, is, and you can help me a little bit here, Brian, what, what's the balance between certificate staff and classified staff in terms of numbers that we're about?
About fifty fifty?
Yeah, sort of fifty fifty, yeah, about fifty fifty.
But I venture a guess that more of our classified staff live in the district as opposed to certified staff. So there are, there are members of the community who will be impacted by there, also taxpayers who are going to be impacted by that. That's my, my fear, my concern. Uh, and, I mean, it doesn't sound like things have changed. I spent a lot of time looking at four-day work week of many, many years ago, and a few districts that had it at that time, found out that there was only negative, both savings, there were some, but, you know, somewhere less than five percent probably overall. But the ripple effects otherwise, the collateral ripple effects otherwise were not worth, you know, that's kind of where I am looking at it.
Most schools that do four-day, I mean, they're starting, you know, seven thirty, seven o'clock in the morning and doing, until like we do now, two, three o'clock in the afternoon, you know? That's, that's typically how they do it, so they can get in their hours and all that.
And, and, so put me in Post Falls, they're, they will, I know thirty-five minutes, I think, to the day for elementary, which will get the elementary kids out around four. And they will add fifteen minutes to the day for secondary. We would have to, I mean, our elementary school kids would be going so late in the day because we have to have an hour between when, um, we pick secondary, because we're doing the double rounds, when we pick secondary up and we then will pick up the elementary. between when, um, we pick secondary, because we're doing the double rounds, when we pick secondary up and we, then we'll pick up the elementary. So if secondary doesn't get out until three thirty, now we can't pick the elementary kids up till four thirty and they're not getting home till five thirty or six at night, which is a really hard mission for elementary students.
You literally have to work much of the school year without kids leaving home in the dark at eight.
So, I, if we had to go down that route, I would rather have a whole year of lots of community input and figuring out what that plan looks like and doing it only because we know it works for families and kids instead of doing it because we're afraid we might lose a couple of teachers.
Any further discussion? Okay, moving on to the truancy protocols.
So these are just the procedures, they, uh, administrative type procedures that would crawl into the, um, truancy policy. Just, uh, so that principals have an understanding of how to, you know, follow.
Yeah, and these were basically put on paper because we didn't have anything. And so to, even throughout the discourse, everyone's doing the same thing. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about what's been prepared for the protocols?
Brooke did provide for, to be, um, a copy of a, um, the, the formal letter that went from the board to the prosecuting attorney and they recreated and take the name out.
Okay.
So, simply then, what I do. That's the only piece that's.
Here.
Yeah, that's the only piece that's missing. Uh, Brooke, Brooke provided that. But I did, the, um, the paperwork that the principal shell complete, um, is based on, again, a, a document that's somebody had submitted to the board, uh, in here in the room, and she was the clerk. And so I just, um, recreated it. There is a, there is actually a form that I, I S B A put out that I gave to Lynn to bring to the post of training.
Okay.
It's like two or three pages long, it's really, yeah, it could be, but I don't, I don't wanna do that easily.
What regard, regarding truancy?
It's this.
Procedure?
This recommendation for board hearing regarding truancy, it's this form, but I S B A has one and it's. Yeah, it, it's, there's, it's a.
Okay.
So.
Alrighty. Any other questions? One minute. Okay. Board member input for future agenda items? Thank you for the work on the truancy protocols. It's late. Uh, board member input for future agenda items? Um, yeah, okay. I think we should discuss our, uh, commitment to I S B A and what we're receiving of being aligned with them. Glad you got a book.
It's on my list of things to give to the board.
Right, but as a board, I think we need to discuss, you know, it.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's my only future input.
Well, we can put that on the agenda and I'll have my information for you as far as, uh, what we're paying and what we're getting and that will help you inform your decision.
Perfect. All right, with that being said, I need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to item code seventy four two oh six one A B O J.
So moved.
One second. Having a motion in a second, you need a roll call vote?
Chair Thompson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burson.
Yes.
Trustee Jones. Trustee Quinby.
Yes.
I'll see you guys in the morning, I know you're still bleeding.
Bye, Brooke. See ya.
I just wanna be transparent, I called it midnight. Whatever. Nobody wanted to bet me this for nine.
Okay, so we have come out of executive session, uh, there's nothing that needs to.